Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us here at City Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Whathe, would you please call the role?
Mayor Paulette Wajardo, Councilmembers Roland Barrera,
Here.
Sylvia Campos, Gil Hernandez,
Michael Hunter,
Jim Klein,
Mike Pusley.
He's here. Everett Roy,
Dan Sekley,
City Manager Peter Zanoni,
Present.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Whathe. So as mentioned, welcome to City Hall. Today we are here conducting our City Council workshop on the fiscal year 2025 budget, I'm sorry, yeah, budget goal setting. So Mr. Zanoni.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, this is our, I think, our third goal-setting session on the budget. So we are close to beginning work with all the directors in the city, assistant directors and our executive leadership team to develop the proposed budget that as a charter requirement I need to present to City Council. This will be in July, July 25th, I believe. But ahead of doing too much work, we know it's important to get the thoughts and ideas of the City Council. And so that's what today's goal-setting session is designed to do. It's a budget goal-setting session. We have numerous topical areas, including revenues and expenses, that we'll go over with you. We have a complete schedule that shows the topic and then the presenter as well. Just to conclude here, so we can get into the program, I would say that what you're going to see is our revenues for this coming fiscal year, beginning October 1, are not going to be as robust as they have, at least in the past two budgets. And as we know, in our general fund, our two biggest, excuse me, our two biggest revenue sources include our property taxes and our sales tax. And we did receive our preliminary certified roll from Nuasis County Appraisal. And what it shows on property values is only a 2.2% increase. That's two factors on the appraisals, one new growth, and then reappraisals on existing growth. So those combined preliminarily are only 2.2%. When we compare it to the last two years, it was 13.5% in the current year, and then 13.4%. And in FY '21, it was 7%. So after three years of pretty robust property value growth, we're seeing a slowdown. This is consistent with other cities in Texas as well. I did see San Antonio recently had a workshop as well, and that's one of the topics they covered is slowing growth. So our other main revenue is sales tax, and that's coming in at a decent clip, but nothing extraordinary. So what we're going to see is revenues will probably be more flat-lined than they have been in the past couple of fiscal years. Our beginning balance is not as robust as it has been in the beginning years as well. But our expenditures are moving up a little bit in areas due to mandated increases. That includes for things like capital improvement projects, when we construct them, we have to be able to operate and maintain them. So that includes things such as the police training academy, splash pads, new swimming pools, and so on. So we're going to show you today some of the mandated increases, and we're going to show you some of the revenues. But having said all that, we do want to get input from the council as to what may be important to you and your constituents, so that we can evaluate it. In this development of the budget, we can always reevaluate how we are recommending the use of our resources, so that to say that we can make some decisions and stop funding certain things to start funding new things that are of greater importance to the community. So put that on the table as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Constance, who's going to go over the budget calendar and some of the financial policies. And we have many department heads here as well today to provide input and information to the council. So I'll turn it over to Constance. Thank you.
My name is Constance Sanchez. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. And I'd like to review with you today the fiscal year '25 budget calendar, as well as go over some of the financial budgetary policies, discuss how we ended up with fiscal year 2023, how we're trending to end fiscal '24, which is our current fiscal year, and what our thoughts are for fiscal year '25. Slide four shows the budget calendar for fiscal year 2025, beginning with today's goal-setting session. I would like for you to know that since January, the budget staff has been diligently working on preparing for this upcoming budget season. Departments also are required to complete their fiscal year '24 estimates for both revenue and expenditures, and are now working on their fiscal '25 projections. As we were gathering the financial data, we felt it was very important to meet with you to review what we have so far, what we're recommending, and to see if there's anything else that you would like to see in the proposed budget. For the months of May through July, the City Manager will be meeting with all the departments to review their fiscal '24 estimates and their fiscal '25 proposed budgets. As you will hear in a few minutes, and as City Managers and only mentioned, this is going to be fiscal '25 will be a leaner budget year than we have had in the past, due to some economic indicators. Once the City Manager has met with all the departments, the budget staff will prepare the proposed fiscal '25 budget that the City Manager will present to you at the City Council meeting on Tuesday, July the 30th. As in prior years, we will be holding budget workshops on various departments and topics throughout the month of August. We will also have our community input sessions in each of the five City Council districts, as we've done in the past. There will be a public hearing on the tax rate and a public hearing on the proposed budget on September the 3rd, along with the first reading of the proposed operating capital budgets. The second reading will be scheduled for Tuesday, September the 10th. On June the 30th, we are scheduled to present the City Council with the financial budgetary policies for this upcoming budget. Slides, let's see, slides five and six show some of the highlights from our current policies. And if you recall, last year, we actually came back with three different revisions to the policies. Initially, we came with some housekeeping items, and then we added a section regarding improvements to future bond design funding. Then we added a section stating that water and wastewater rates would be reviewed annually versus twice every two years. And then we added a section about using the TASPS funding, which is that Texas Ambulance Supplemental, excuse me, Payment Program for the Fire Department. But a main focus that we wanted to show you today were the reservation of fund balances in each of the different fund types. As you recall, for the general fund, our goal is to maintain an unassigned fund balance between 17 and 20% for major contingencies, which is equals to about two to two and a half months of appropriations. For fiscal year 2023, we actually ended up at 30.1%. But however, if you recall, for fiscal year '24, the budget we're in, we programmed about $27 million of this excess into the budget, leaving us only about 6 million of funds that were over this allocation. For the internal service funds, our goal is an unassigned fund balance of up to 5%. And these funds include contracts and procurement, engineering, fleet facilities, and IT. For the group health plans, it's a little bit different. They're more specialized. Our goal is to maintain a fund balance, of course, to pay our administrative costs and run out claims, and to hold a reserve for catastrophic claims equaling 10% of the projected claims. And this reserve is actuarially determined and utilized in the computation for the year-end reserve. The general liability and worker compensation funds are similar. They are internal service funds. Our goal is to maintain a fund balance, to fund the long-term liabilities, the incurred but not reported IBNR expenses, and a risk margin for adverse development of claims, and to provide a 25% catastrophic reserve and 25% of cost of purchased insurance. Again, this is actuarially determined, and this is utilized with the budget staff when we determine this fund balance goal. For the enterprise funds, our goal is to maintain an unreserved fund balance of 25% of the annual appropriations. And for our debt service fund, our goal is to maintain an unreserved fund balance of 2% of the annual debt service appropriations. Additionally, the financial budgetary policies outline funding for streets. For street maintenance, we transfer the higher of 6% general fund revenue, or $10.8 million, whichever's higher, plus 5% of our industrial district revenue. And this is transferred to the street maintenance fund. For the residential street reconstruction, we also transfer 1% of the general fund revenue, plus 5%, an additional 5% of industrial district revenue. So this goes to the residential street reconstruction fund. We also outline, the policies contain information regarding operation contingencies in each of the funds. In the general fund, we have $500,000 for the general fund, and up to 2% of annual appropriations in the enterprise funds, internal service funds, and special revenue funds. There is also a section in our financial budgetary policies regarding short and long-range capital improvement plan. And this year, we are considering adding a section on debt to operating ratio goals, as well as a section to address certificate of obligations.
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. Constance, under the funding for residential street construction,
Yes, sir.
Is that the same as our residential program that we have going on now with the pavement-only?
Yes, that's the same fund.
Same fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Residential streets, yes. Okay, so the next few slides, we're going to discuss how we ended up fiscal year 2023, where we think we will end up for fiscal '24 and our projections for '25. So slide number seven, overall for fiscal year '23, the city ended up in a better fiscal position than we had estimated. For the general fund, as you can see from this slide, we had estimated to have a fund balance of about $95.9 million, and we ended up with $99.7 million, which is about $3.8 million to the good. For the hotel occupancy tax fund, we ended up almost right on target, just a tad short. For the water operating fund, we ended up again almost right on target, about $370,000 to the good. Wastewater, we ended up $3.6 million over the estimate. And then stormwater, we ended up right on target again, about half a million to the good. So once the annual comprehensive annual financial report, or ACFER, is completed, then the applicable fund balances are given to the budget department to use as our beginning balance for fiscal year '24. The fiscal year '24 budgeted revenue for the general fund is estimated to be about $325.8 million. Staff's current revenue estimates are $328.5 million. For a difference-
Constance?
Constance, we have a question.
Yes, sorry, yes, sir.
I understand on your last slide that the difference between, can you just tell me what PO is?
I'm sorry, sure. Those are purchase orders, and so what happens-
Okay, thank you.
So if we encumber funds this fiscal year, what we do is we obligate that budget, and we transfer it to the next year. So instead of increasing the budget the next year with fiscal '25 funds, we're going to be rolling-
Yeah, I got you. I just didn't know-
Sorry about that.
...definition was, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Councilman Pusley.
Constance, on that same slide, on the general fund numbers, you said that was the fund balance numbers?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay, what percentage does that represent of our total?
I want to say-
Total budget?
I believe 99% is, 99 million is probably close to 30% again, as we ended up last year.
Okay. And is that historically what we're trying to keep in the way of fund balance?
Well, we try to keep up to 20%, so about 60 million.
Okay, so we're over that a little bit.
Yes, sir. But we did program, though, into fiscal '27 utilizing about 27 million of that. So that's already in the budget, already budgeted.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, sure. Okay, so I'll just go over the slide this one more time. So for fiscal year '24, the budgeted revenue for general fund is estimated to be $325.8 million. Our estimates were $328.5 million, for a difference of about $2.7 million, meaning we're pretty much on target with what we had anticipated for the general fund. For the fiscal '25 revenue outlook, the city's investment advisor, Linda Patterson, with Meter, briefed us last week at our quarterly investment committee meeting. Initially, it was thought that the Federal Reserve would lower the interest rates up to six times in calendar year 2024. However, as we all know, this has not happened. And it's anticipated that the Fed might lower the rate once, maybe twice, before the end of 2024. And this is due to a couple of reasons. Inflation has been dropping, but it seems to kind of be stalled at this point. Employment numbers are solid, but higher wages mean more inflation. And the general economy is kind of middle of the road at this point. It's not too hot, it's not too cold. So we're kind of even at this period in time. For our area, it looks like the manufacturing activity has slowed a bit. People are not buying as much because of inflation. But on the positive side, oil and gas industries remain the strength of our economy. Unemployment rates have dropped dramatically, but leisure remains strong. So all that being said, we're looking at a pretty lean, tight budget for fiscal year '25, as the City Manager had mentioned. And we're going to talk a little bit later about how our assessed values are doing. But all of these factors lead us to believe that the economy is flattening somewhat in our area. And so our proposed fiscal '25 budget will not have too many bells and whistles as we have seen in the past. One thing that we do need to discuss, however, are future mandated increases for maintenance and operations of some of our significant buildings, facilities, and features that will be coming online, that we need to include in the general fund budget for fiscal '25. We have 11 of these items that we would like to briefly discuss next. And at this point, Chief Wade is going to start off our discussion about talking about Fire Station Number Three.
Thank you. Brandon Wade, Corpus Christi Fire Chief. So for our new Fire Station Three, that's currently being built right now off Morgan, I thank a number of y'all who were there at the opening for that, which is going to be a newer facility, much larger, be able to house our apparatus and the needed specialty equipment that we have at Station Three. We did put a cost in there for the maintenance of the facility. I know that's something that's important, to be able to take care of the things that we get. So with that, we're estimating about $50,000 to this facility. And when you break that down, we look at it about $22,000 for utilities. Now, while water, trash services, things like that shouldn't change, we are taking a guesstimate on what the electricity bill will be, because it's a much larger facility. It's supposed to be, of course, a lot of efficiencies in it. But we're not going to have the exact number for what the electricity should be. Like I said, we shouldn't be using any more water, just because we're moving over there, same number of personnel. But that will be our estimated in utilities. For building maintenance, we're looking at industry standard. We're using the $3 per square foot, which goes to about $28,000. We're not anticipating, hopefully, anything major occurring in the early years of this new facility. And the first year of facilities are usually under the warranty, in which we'll be working with the contractor and subcontractors to get things fixed as things come up within that warranty. So the rest of it would be as we continue to have the building and use the building.
Chief Wade, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Morgan.
This is the one on Morgan, yes, ma'am. Estimated to be completed in March of next year. There was a delay in the, on the construction project with the foundation. They had to make some corrections on it, so it held construction up for a little bit. But now that they got all of that fixed with the engineers, they were pouring some concrete, I believe, last Friday on it. So it is moving along, and the estimated completion would be of March in 2025. Questions from the group?
No questions or comments. Thank you, Chief Wade.
With that, I will introduce Chief Markle to come up.
Great. Welcome, Chief Markle.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chief Markle, Police Department. Talking about operational costs, so we'll have some increased operational costs for our new facility, our training facility on Yorktown Boulevard. I know you've all been there. These will include custodial service, landscape mowing. We will have to go out for bid on that, so that is a rough estimate. Utilities phone, shredding service, janitorial, those things. It's a brand-new building, 37,000 square feet. Where maintenance costs, like the Fire Department, we're seeing about $3 per square foot. So we'll see how the first-year run goes and go from there. I stand by for any questions.
So I guess I have to ask, and Peter, this might be more of a question for you. On this facility, for example, are janitorial, this is supplies?
Supplies.
Or both, services? So we have a contract now for janitorial. Do we add this on?
Well, maybe. It depends on what contract we use. So we can't, in some cases, like our security contract, we amend the current contract to add more security or different levels. So we're not, we haven't got to the point yet to figure this one necessarily. Do we amend a current maintenance contract or custodial contract, or go out for a brand-new RFP?
And probably the same with mowing as well, right?
Yeah, right.
That's correct. Mowing will be the same.
To be determined still, yep.
Okay.
Our current contractor for mowing did state that he will not be able to pick up this area, so we'll have to go out for contract bid on it.
And we also need to look at the cost for city crews to do it with, it's one of the model here at City Hall, people may not have realized, but in the past, we had a contract, and that was taken over by city forces. So we'll do a cost-benefit analysis or cost comparison to see if can the private sector or the city crews do it more efficiently and at a lower cost to the taxpayer.
And I would guess that maybe Del Mar would be an option there. I mean, they have theirs, I'm sure they have a contract there for that whole property, maybe something to do with it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Possibility.
Yeah, that's another good example where they could, right?
Wonderful, thank you. Councilman Sekley.
Hey, Chief, refresh my memory. What are we doing with the old facility on Corona?
Definitely want to keep the facility. I have a couple other units that are vying for that position. I do need that building in that area.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Roy.
So again, I want to just clarify, for the utilities and phones, which of course is an expense now, is this going to be additional that you're saying with the new building?
It's a new building, it's additional expense, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a brand-new facility, not currently in the budget.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's about, how much, how many square feet in the current academy?
8,000 in the current academy.
Eight, so this is four times as big?
Four times the size, yes.
Right, so it'll take a little bit more to maintain and operate it.
Okay, thank you, Chief Markle.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And with that, I'll introduce Heather Holbert.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Heather Holbert, City Manager. So we're going to talk about our parks request. So the first one is for the Billwood Aquatic Center. And so that, we're excited about that facility coming online. So the anticipated annual cost of that facility is about $635,000. That includes the personnel, security, which the security will be an after-hour security, so first set from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., to help look over that asset that we have. The purification, the chemicals, supplies and equipment, maintenance and repairs, utilities, and then other operating cost. So this, we have based our estimations on our other pools, but have increased that, because this pool is bigger and deeper. So when you're looking at the chemical use and some of the supplies and stuff like that, it'll be a little bit more than what we have used in our other pools, so.
And this, Heather, is, this is an annual cost, but for how long? I mean, how do you see-
It would be recurring, because these are the true operational cost of this facility.
Right, I guess what I should say is, what do we anticipate these are going to go up to? Let's just say after, I mean, do you think it'll stay this way for three years, two years, you know?
Well, I mean, when you look at personnel, so personnel will move with whatever salary ranges are. This does reflect the new pay scale that we put in for our lifeguards. So that has increased. You know, the security service, if we decide to continue with that through contract, or if we decide to look at something more comprehensive with park security, that may be, maybe come in a little bit less, or it'll continue to increase as those costs increase. Purification chemicals, unfortunately, we're at the- Purification chemicals, unfortunately, we're at the, you know, it's based off of the market. Those actually have, they increased about $15,000 from what we originally thought they were going to be. When you're looking at those chemicals, those are, those are increasing at a larger rate. Things like maintenance repairs and supplies, it's just going to depend off of what those pricing is. You know, you don't see, a lot of times you don't see huge increases, so it may be just a small piece, small increase at one or two or 3%. Utilities, are we do, our electric utility, of course, is under contract, and so we do have a contracted rate for that. This is an estimation of what we think it would be. This could go up or go down, just depending on what the actual usage is as we get into the full operations of it.
Okay.
So these are, you know, running it through modeling, looking at what our other facilities are like. That's what we've based these costs of, but they could adjust some once we get into the actual operations.
It'd be interesting just to see what the five-year runout is of this.
Okay.
Because you're, we're at 635,000 right now. You know, hitting a million dollars to operate and maintain this is something to seriously, I realize we're moving forward, but it's very, very much something to consider in terms of what does that outlook look like?
That's a good recommendation. We'll do that. And just to put on our radar as well, we have the North Side Hillcrest Pool as well, or Aquatic Center. It'll come online in 2025, 2026. So, and that'll be not, not as big as this one, but still, you know, a meaningful budget.
Yeah, I think we really need to look at that in terms of the cost of operating all these pools. This is all general fund?
Yes, general fund.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, I was curious on the, on these expenses, are we kind of pulling this with all the pools within the city?
I'm not sure. What is your question?
Are we pulling this, the purchase of all the chemicals and purification requirements, supplies associated with all the pools within the city is under a single contract?
I believe so. I'll have to double-check on that, but I would, I would assume that we would have, we would do that. We would have one supplier. I know that we do that for some of our professional services. We have the same company that goes and inspects our UV lights and things like that. So the assumption, I'm assuming that yes.
Does that include security?
I'm sorry?
Does that include security?
The security, the security that we're talking about, yes, that is on the general city contract. It's the same contract that we utilize for other facilities.
Do we have this security at other pools?
We do not. So I think it's one of the things of looking at, this is a bigger complex, this is a newer complex, and it is something that we're actually looking across all of our parks on how best to.
Right, and we don't do security in auditorium. That falls under CCISD, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And they have 20, I mean, they have evening security at that facility?
I can't speak to that. I'd have to find out.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Heather, I'm sure it's not a $635,000 a year, but do we have any idea what the revenue component is for revenue generation from this? Aren't we charging for special events or anything like that, that we get some revenue from?
Exactly. We would have some revenue from those special events. You know, general entrance into the pool is free for all, for everybody. But yes, there would be some, if there are those special events or rentals or things like that, there would be some revenue component. I would venture to guess, and I'm not sure at the top, that it is off the top of my head, but it probably does not cover the operational cost.
And to the mayor's point, with this and the North Side coming online, we may need to rethink our policy of having free entry. Hate to say that, but maybe even figure it out where it's only city-proof you can get in, maybe visitors have to pay, I don't know. But certainly with those ramping up costs, it's something to look at in the future.
Sure.
Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as far as cost is concerned, or payment, I don't agree with that. But the reason that I was asking, I wanted to speak, was I wanted to know, we have, fortunately, in District Two, we've had a pool for a long time, which is the Collier. Drew a blank there, Collier. And I don't, I was going to say, I don't remember seeing any kind of security, or, I mean, so this is something new.
Yes.
Because it's a, these are brand-new facilities.
Correct.
That now we're having to incorporate security, because I'm looking at the next page as well. It's double, 350K for the water gardens. What, I mean, is that really necessary? I mean, to this degree?
Sure. So, and this is only security from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. This is not 24-hour security, but it's what is being proposed. That it is, you know, these are a newer asset to the city. We're investing a lot of money into it. So having security when we first open, just to make sure that we've got, the facility is being protected, looking to see if there's any type of misuse or vandalism or things like that. But like I said, that is something that we probably, we would like to explore a little bit further, is looking at comprehensively park security, asset facility, our facility security, looking to see how we need to address that.
Yeah, because I really don't see the need, or haven't seen the need.
Sure.
You know, that, our pool has been around for 50 years, and I just, that's a, that's a huge expense.
Exactly.
So instead of looking at charging people, maybe we need to look at not having this kind of security. 130,000 a year? Anyway, I would, yeah, check twice on that. Let me see. I guess that was really my main concern, is the security for the water, you know, the water gardens as well, you know, 350, but I know I'm going ahead. I don't know. I don't know if you want to answer now, or we need to, you still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman, these are, so we, over the next 60 days, we'll be developing these proposals. This is kind of the initial thought, so it's not refined by any means right now. What we do know is when we open a new asset, it has a higher propensity for vandalism, and the Cole Park Pier is the example. So within a few days, it was extremely vandalized because we had no security services. So it's not to say this is an absolute, but we're saying a new feature, a new attraction, especially something like this pool, that we have no, we have nothing like this in the city. This is
Okay.
high-quality, has a lot of component pieces. This clubhouse is, is two different pool areas. We're also recommending, though, in the bond program, perimeter fencing for this park. So as of today, Billwitt doesn't have a good, secure perimeter fencing, so it's real vulnerable at night. If, when we leave and we close everything up, anybody can get in. So these are, these are saying, we're thinking about this. We're going to see what the cost is. We're going to see what it would mean. But we do have experience here in the city. When we leave a brand-new asset unattended, it tends to get, tends to get vandalized. Yes, ma'am?
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. The cost of water, is that utilities?
The utilities would be primarily the electricity.
So how much is it going to cost to pump all this water?
I.
Water usage price per thousand gallons, going rate?
Sure. I don't have that number in handy.
Could you get us that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Presley.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, when we all raise our hands and support these water features, it's like I said before, it costs a lot of money to have fun. So it costs money to run these facilities, and it's something we have to all think about when we're proposing these. And the same with swimming pools, as it is for splash pads or any of these water-using features. They cost a lot of money to maintain. They're very expensive to maintain. I have a water-using feature in my backyard, and I know it cost me a year to maintain it. I think you may be a little light on utilities.
Sure.
So I, and the security services, I agree with that. I think you have to, for a complex of this size and the amount of money we've put into this, you have to have some security around it. And one of the things that we get criticized, or the city gets criticized all the time about is, we spend a lot of money on these features, and then we don't look after them. And I, so it's expensive, but I think money wells up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bonetta.
Yeah, along that lines, I guess just for relativity, we obviously, I don't think we had budgeted in originally for Cole Park, for the pier. Yeah, so.
Yeah, we didn't, Councilman, for the security.
Yeah, for the security. So do we have any idea how much we're spending there?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I know that this, this 130,000 is based off of partially what, that contract of what we're spending per person.
Robert knows. Robert, come on down if you can.
Thank you. And like I said, I'm just saying relative, we have to protect all our assets.
Right.
You know, and so. 269 is what we spend at Cole Park Pier.
269?
Yes, sir. 269,000.
That's 24-hour every day of the year, right? 24-hour service?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and the security there is also somewhat as ambassadors to people, wondering what is this? Can I fish?
Yeah.
What are the rules? So they do communicate with the public, so they're kind of ambassadors, not the right word, but they do provide more than just security.
Kind of scared, sort of.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. But we're going to be, through this budget, we'll be reevaluating the Cole Park Pier, and we have had it now for a year or so, to see, is it too much service? Since the add of it, we've also added security cameras, so we need to see how much of that is a deterrent. So, but as Councilman Barrera pointed out, if we don't budget it, then we can, then you can have a budget challenge if you, if you need it, or if you need a higher level. So the, again, this is not the budget, but these are some preliminary financial thoughts that we have with service delivery and some of these new assets.
And I think that's good. And is, that's District Two, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to be sure and add that in, District Two, that's, it's an important asset that I'm sure the council member wants to ensure is maintained, along with the new, the new splash pad.
That's right.
And the, and the most recently remodeled skate park.
And the Million Dollar Playground.
Yes, and the Million Dollar Playground.
Oh, and the Million Dollar Playground.
So we need to ensure.
There we go.
I'm wondering how many millions is going to District Two with regard to parks, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Just, and Councilwoman Camples, just so you're aware, that we're going to have to expand that footprint as well for that security service, too, for the playground and the splash pad as well.
Okay.
That'll be, we'll be coming in a little bit more next year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Yeah. Yes, Councilwoman.
Just to add that the Cole Park Pier is 24/7. I mean, it's because people are actually using Cole Park 24/7.
I believe it closes at 10, doesn't it?
At, at the pool. They're not going to be there at night, so.
Oh, good.
Anyway, it shouldn't be. I mean, I see it's 130 budgeted for the Billwitt, but what I'm saying for Cole Park, it's different because it's 24/7. It's, it's very much.
It's wide open. There's no.
Wide open. It's not like, you know, heading over to Billwitt. So anyway, it should not be as much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, can we, Water Garden. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Councilman Presley.
So, Robert, before you run off, or maybe somebody, are we used, the Cole Park Pier, is a lot of fishing going on there? I mean, is it highly utilized for that?
Tons, yes, sir. We go, we clean it every morning at 7:00. We go and power wash, things like that, and we always get comments from fishermen daily that, you know, why we're cleaning at 7:00 a.m.
Just a point of reference.
Lots of fish.
One of the things that the county had that made money every year was a little bait and tackle shop at Bob Hall Pier.
Okay.
It made really good revenue.
Open one up. Mike's tackle shop.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Oh, Councilman Bonetta.
Here, you know, what is it? That could be part of the county-city partnership. There you go.
There you go.
There, you could open up Mike's tackle shop.
Your first project.
Is that, would that be the precinct? Anyway, just along that lines, you know, is there a different time? Because, you know, I've gotten a couple of calls over people that, and I know it's not always 7:00 a.m. There's a few times that people go out there. Is it posted? I mean, I haven't been out there, that that's when the cleaning is?
Yes, sir. We do have signage out there that says we're cleaning at 7:00.
Okay. Do we know, do we, I just want to ensure, and I know we're, I don't want to get too far off base, but just, just ensure that it's not at a peak time.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's just like when municipal court had basically let her, let people go to lunch, and that's the, that's the, that's the prime time for them to be there, because that's when people go. Anyway, food for thought. My apologies.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Roy.
I was actually wanting to comment, when we get up to the Water Garden, so if you want to go ahead and.
Sure. We're through with, are we through with?
Go ahead.
So then moving into the Water Garden, so the anticipated annual cost for the operation of the Water Garden is $594,000. This does include security services, and these, this would be 24-hour security, purification, the chemicals, the maintenance and repairs, utilities, and then other operating cost. So when you compare this to, like, we just looked at Billwitt, so this is more water, a larger facility, and then it's a little bit more complex because of the fountains and things like that. So our chemicals are more expensive, along with our utilities are more expensive, too, so.
When we looked at this project, and I know Councilmember Hernandez was talking specifically about maintenance, and at that time, we projected the maintenance to be 300,000.
Yeah.
And we put that in the budget at 300,000. And now the security services exceed 300,000 alone.
Exactly.
So I want to make sure, are we looking, you know, like we've said on some of the other projects, are we looking at cameras? Are we looking at, I mean, this is a lot of money to spend on security services.
Sure. So there's a couple of things. So yes, we are looking at cameras. The other thing is, is that within the budget, there'll be a request, not at this time, but as we go through the budget process, is possibly adding some additional personnel here. If we do add some personnel, that'll be dedicated to just this facility, then that security would be cut in half, basically, in the fact that it would just be needed after hours. The other thing is, I think that we really want to understand when this facility is being used, how it's being used, and so that security will help us track that, and then we can adjust as we get further into the operations. You know, part of this, it's been closed since Harvey, and so understanding how it's being used and when we may have some key times that we may need to put an extra set of eyes on it.
The other thing I'm thinking about is, because we have other partners right there, like Harbor Playhouse and the Art Museum and that, maybe this roving security person could encompass all of those buildings, and we could spread that cost out.
Sure.
Because I just think that the unfortunate thing is, we tried to do our homework when we came forward with this idea and included the maintenance in there, and now it's double. And, and so that just, it stings a little bit. But I think if we can look at cutting that down and, and having security looked at in that entire area.
Sure.
Maybe we can absorb some of that cost.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. And like I said, I mean, one of the things we are going to be exploring as we go through the budget process is, is it something that we need to increase park enforcement? So instead of having a contracted security that we utilize our park enforcement, but we need more people to be able to make more turns around or laps around those areas.
And Heather, I think you're right. I think we really don't know how it's going to be used.
Yes.
And more importantly, or equally important, when.
Yes.
Right? So if you have, really, from eight to five, no one, you know, three people that go.
Yeah.
You know, is the best use of security really, you know, at that point in time? I realize it's, it's a delicate balance. But, but the use of it and the times is going to be very important, and my guess is it's going to be, obviously, you know, in the later afternoon evenings.
Sure.
Yeah. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, we've gotten to a lot of discussion about security, but you have other facilities there that I'm not sure, do they have security separate from the city? Like, for example, the Art Museum, the Science Museum, obviously the Convention Center? So it's all separate from what we're looking at?
So it is all separate. So at the American Bank Center, so they don't, I think they have some, they don't necessarily have onsite 24-hour security. They do have security, they do have security whenever they have events. But there, I don't, not believe that there is staffing there 24 hours a day. I know at the Art Museum, they have an internal, I believe, security person. I don't believe that they do exterior security. I can't speak to the Natural History, the History Museum. I'm not sure about them.
So does Heritage Park have security?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so we're kind of in a situation where we have these assets, and there's no coordination between any of them?
Yeah, it's, we're beginning to have that coordination, so a lot of these questions you're asking are ones that, if we haven't already, we will be. We know there's all those, those agencies, and we have the, we have museums that we own. So it could be that we can partner up and save on some of these costs when it comes to security.
Why don't we, why don't we look at that? Because, I mean, we have a lot of things that, you know, that are separate. You know, maybe we work with OBG, we work with our museum to coordinate some sort of joint effort.
Right.
Because it is one area, and it seems like you would have different. Because it is one area, and it seems like you would have different securities in different areas, doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
That's true.
Sure.
Same thing at the pool, so with Delmar being right across the street, we maybe could partner with their security.
Right, and we're going to actually have a substation right across the street from this pool, so.
Right, and a training academy, so these are kind of worst-case scenarios, just to say, if we went in the loan, didn't talk to anybody, but obviously, we partner well with our agencies that work with us, and we need to see, can we, can we bring the cost down and have maybe better service, even if we partner with somebody?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, I think there's, there's got to be some more coordination between.
We agree.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Presley.
Yeah, back to the question about revenue, I, I know that the Water Garden is open to the general public, you know, twenty-four by seven, but if someone wants to use the green center space for like, a special event, a wedding, or whatever, do we charge for that, or?
I believe historically, when the, before, when the Water Gardens was closed, we did. There was, there was facility, basically, facility usage fees. I think that's something we are looking towards right now, we just don't know, we don't have anything to base that off of since it has been closed.
There is a rental, there'll be a rental fee.
Yeah.
Now, just for the public to know, we're not going to rent it until July timeframe, so we can get the operations and the grass and everything established.
Sure.
Also leave it open for the, the general public. So Parks Protocol or Business Plan will be that in the July timeframe, we'll put note, well before that, we'll put notice out about how do you rent it, what's the fee, but there is a rental fee structure, much like any, any of our other park facilities that we rent out.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be a revenue generator for us.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, I, I'm glad that these, all these questions and discussions are being made, because that's exactly what I was thinking. I'm like, well, there's a lot of security already, you know, around all those buildings. And then I was thinking, too, about our own police department, and you know, what is it that they could also contribute to this kind of, you know, coordination? You know, could we, you know, possibly have some of our own police and, or maybe, you know, like you had said, you had mentioned earlier, that we could actually get, you know, a personnel, like somebody.
Yes.
Hired, and I, I would think, obviously, that that would also cut down on the expenses, because, you know, that's, that's a frightening figure, three hundred and fifty thousand. But, you know, again, I guess that's what these discussions are for, so, anyway, good, good comments here.
Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Great. Okay. Then moving into the North Beach Bathroom Facility. So for this bathroom facility, it is anticipated on this two hundred thousand dollars annual operating cost. There is security services included in this one, and this is a seven PM to seven AM or overnight security. Historically, in this area, we've had, had challenges with vandalism and homelessness and things like that, and so we do feel it's important to make sure that we are protecting our asset there. And then we have supplies and equipment and maintenance and repairs for just the general operation of those bathrooms, the cleaning, the supplies, and just ongoing maintenance and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, this facility, we, we were touring it last week, actually, we're looking at a neighboring property owner's drainage situation, but it's a beautiful facility, much higher level standard of, of quality than what we've seen in many parts of our city, so, but the, but we, we do anticipate some type of issue with, you know, transience or what have you, so this one, we definitely need security cameras, some type of security service to protect the investment, you know, and make sure, because it's, it's a good place to sleep if you wanted to overnight or have a party, you know, when the city's gone, so we've got to watch this one real close.
Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
What's that, Councilman?
It was a problem. You do. Turn that little light on.
It was a problem at the existing restroom facilities, both of them, the one at the far end and the one that you're replacing.
Well, we want to make this, we want to make it family-friendly, so it, there's a lot of picnic tables, barbecue pits, so it has to be a welcoming, inviting place for families, so we're trying to minimize, I don't want to, you know, belittle anyone, but we want to minimize people that really probably shouldn't be there, you know?
Right. Okay.
As we, as we say, the anticipated user impact to the facility, so we think that there'll be a greater impact to the facility.
Yes. Okay.
So then moving into the Cole Park Splash Pad, so anticipated about twenty-five thousand dollars for this annually, primarily for supplies and equipment, including chemicals, and then maintenance and repairs, just the ongoing routine maintenance and repairs that need to be done to keep the facility top-notch.
Councilman Hernandez.
So just as a verification here, this splash pad is in Maximo with scheduled maintenance, correct?
Yes, it is, it is, yes.
Sorry, I had to throw that in there.
Yes, you did.
Okay. And that, this is inclusive of that scheduled maintenance, right?
Yes.
Within the Maximo?
Yes.
So it can have reports and X.
Yes, just like all these facilities we've been talking about, all of them will have those preventive maintenances, the routine maintenances, all of that will be inputted into Maximo.
So is this based on the reports from other splash pads we have in the city through Maximo?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, these, yes, what we've done for all of these is we've looked at the similar, similar facilities, looked at what those are, built the schedules, are, will be building the schedules off of that, and base these costs over what's being spent in those facilities.
So when we did this last year, this is kind of, this kind of came up during that timeframe. Can we, can I get a report on Maximo on our splash pads with all the maintenance that has been done and the, the associated cost?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Presley.
So, Peter, what, what are we going to do? Because I get calls about this all the time. What are we going to do when we enter the next stage of drought contingency about these splash pads?
Yeah, I'm glad you up, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman, I was going to talk about here in a moment. So, right now, the drought management plan, the drought contingency plan that we have says, this is an approved document from the City Council and the staff, says that any type of pool, whether it's a city, municipal, or a private home pool, cannot be refilled. And that includes splash pads and things like the Water Garden, the Bay Shore Water Fountain. I am going to revisit that, though, with Drew, and bring back a recommendation to council, whether it's keep it like this or change it. I know that in my time on the Blake Radio Show, we get a lot of call-ins about, what am I going to do about my pool? I don't want it collapsing. What can the city recommend? So today, we're at twenty-seven combined percent on our western reservoirs, so that twenty percent's quite probable. So we are going to be back in the next week or two, probably next two, two weeks, I should say, with some type of recommendation to City Council and the community about what do we do with that provision? Do we, do we adhere to it? Do we not do it, you know? So that's coming forward, where just last week, or actually, a couple of weeks ago, we began the conversation last week, we had more conversations with Drew, and so we're going to bring something back to the council soon. Right now, just, in short, it does say you can't fill up your pool, and that's all pools, and that's splash pads, and that's stage three.
I think you're going to have to look at that, because, you know, the, the investment that people put into these backyard swimming pools is significant.
Right.
You know, and they, the, the pool manufacturers will tell you, if you don't keep water in, it's susceptible to damages.
Right. That's why we're looking into it in part, that's one reason why, and that, like I said at the Blake Radio Show, we get calling, a lot of call-ins on that when I'm on, once a month, so, plus the, you know, for our inner-city kids and families that don't have much choice, if there's no city pool, and it's a hot summer, I'm not sure. So we're going to look into that, we're also going to see.
I think the city pools are no different. I mean, you can't, you can't let a ten million dollar facility over at this park, you know, go without the water being replenished on a regular basis like it needs to be, you just can't do that.
Yeah, we agree, that's why the drought management plan that we're using was approved over five years ago.
Yeah.
So we need to revisit it, given the circumstance that we face.
But now, we don't need, we don't have to run splash pads.
But, you know, I'm checking to see the daily water evaporation from a pool versus a splash pad, so it could be that we cover the city pools and don't keep them accessible to minimize evaporation. I want to see the difference in lost water in a splash pad versus a pool. I don't have that yet, but we're going to see.
Talk to your chemical guy, when you cover a pool, it changes the whole program with respect to chemicals.
Yeah.
Costs money to have fun.
I know. But we're sympathetic to the private, to the, to the private pool owner as well as the city, so that's why we're going to be bringing something back to the council.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Councilman Hunter.
Thank you. Just so Councilman Hernandez knows, I was giving him a compliment last week by sarcasm, but it was supposed to be a compliment, so I hope he's not offended. And I'm sorry, Coach, you said it was twenty-four hours at Cole Park, and all the other facilities will not, will be half-day?
We're looking at, at the Water Gardens being twenty-four hours.
Okay, thank you.
And Cole Park is twenty-four.
Yeah, Cole Park is, yeah.
Cole Park's twenty-four hours, and we're looking at the Water Gardens being twenty-four hours as well.
Okay. Councilwoman Campos.
Uh-oh. I forgot what I was going to say. I guess the main thing is, you know, whenever we are going to be talking about, I guess the drought exemption, I mean, the drought, right? I mean, it was scheduled for the twenty-first now, or the drought contingency plan, or is that what we're talking?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, Councilwoman.
Yeah, because I thought I'd spoken to Drew, and he said that it's been pushed back again, so I'm like, well, I, you know, we had our agenda, our forecast agenda, and it had it for the twenty-first, so that's no longer.
I don't think it's on the twenty-first, but I did tell Drew we need to bring it sooner than later.
Okay.
He was wanting to move it back a little bit more, but it's already expired at this point, and we did get an extension from TCEQ, but we need to bring it forward.
That's what I thought, because it, it's already expired, I thought we were supposed to.
Well, we have a holdover, TCEQ's aware, and they've given us some extra time, but at this point, it is what it is, is some administrative changes.
Yeah.
We've got to look at this pool issue, and, and we also want to look at what we did before entering into the stages sooner rather than later. We're not making any recommendation to change the, the drought exemption fee, we're not, we're not going to recommend changing that, some on the council may want to bring that up, but we're not recommending changing it.
Well, I am, but anyway, I guess we'll discuss it then.
Yes, ma'am.
But back to the drought, you know, that this is the reason that, you know, that, I mean, it gets hot and people want to get some relief, it, it just doesn't, it seems like it's counterintuitive to cut off the water to get cooled off, anyway, but I guess we'll be discussing that, about the splash pad going into stage three.
Right.
Yeah, it just, like.
Yeah, when that, when the, when the current plan was created over five years ago, I don't, I'm not even sure if we had any splash pads, and so.
Yeah.
We want to look to see, why was that included as a, as a metric?
As a, uh-huh.
And do, and do other cities that might have drought stages, do they include their pools? So we need to revisit it, that's why we, to answer Councilman Presley, we've been looking at it.
Yeah.
And we're going to be bringing something soon back to council.
Right.
Because property owners are asking constantly, and I'm asking for our own city pools, you know, especially when school gets out.
Well, I know, yeah, there's some people that do have pools, but for me, I'm just looking out for the general public.
Well, we are, too.
That don't have, yeah, you know, you want to get cooled off, and you need somewhere to go, so.
The good thing about here is we have the beach and the bay.
I know, I know. But there's some that can't.
I know.
You know, don't have vehicles to get over there.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Presley.
Yeah, I want to go back to something that you mentioned a while ago, and that is, with respect to security, our police officers are not trained to be, that's, that's not what we hire police officers for, to be security guards.
Yeah, it's not a good use, it's a high, it's a higher paid position.
I take great offense to that.
Yeah, right.
Our, we have a dedicated police department that's dedicated to public safety.
For neighborhood patrol, right.
And neighborhood patrols.
Yeah.
And, and not guarding the swimming pools.
It's not a good use of taxpayer money, not that they couldn't do it, they could easily do it, but it's, it's too, they're trained at too high of a level.
Our police officers do.
Right. Exactly. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, Heather, let's move on to Northside Hillcrest Aquatic Center.
Sure. So this, this, this is the new Northside Hillcrest Aquatic Center, so this one is still under design, and we've not begun construction on it, so right now, we're anticipating that we'll need to put at least a, a partial year's cost in for fiscal year twenty-five. That does include some one-time equipment purchases, it'll be to, for furniture fixtures, things like that within the pool, that will not be recurring. But these, the, the, this is modeled off of the same model we're utilizing for Billwitt, since it hasn't been designed, we're not sure exactly how big this is going to be, but we based the personnel cost, along with security, purification, all of those other costs, off of what we're utilizing for Billwitt right now. And we'll continue to refine that as we get further through design and understand what the size and scope of that project will be.
Okay, Councilman Roy.
So I just want to kind of publicly state, you know, this, this Northside Hillcrest Aquatic Center is part of the agreement for the bridge in Tech Dot, correct?
Yes.
And this is something that they share the cost in, as far as building the pool. I think it was five point five, and we put in four point five?
That's right, that's correct, Councilman.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, do you think that we have any negotiation or any room that we could get Tech Dot to help with the maintenance of it?
I would think that that may be a long shot, but we could definitely ask them.
Well, did you talk to them, Neiman? We didn't, yeah, we haven't talked to them about that, but we can check, Councilman.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just think that because if we didn't do this, as you know, then they wouldn't receive their funding, so I think it's important that we, we both ponied up and, and did this, but at the same time, I'd like somebody to, to talk to Tech Dot and see if we can't get some help there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Heather, let's move on to code enforcement.
Sure. So I'll turn it over to Steve Viera.
And just to remind the council while Steve comes up, all these are what we're considering mandated increases to the budget, you know, where we don't have really much choice to not do them, maybe not at the exact service levels, but we know we have to maintain and operate and secure some of the new assets coming online. So we're considering these mandated. They have to be funded first before any other discretionary funding.
Right, no, Peter, and that's absolutely what you've heard from this council in prior, you know, to make certain that all of this is included in a budget, so we know exactly where we stand moving forward in these coming to fruition. So thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Steve Viera, Assistant City Manager. This next mandate deals with the transition of code enforcement positions from the CDBG grant to the general fund. This is year two. This is the final year of this transition plan. Last year, we moved five positions over, and then this year, we'll be moving four officers and one admin position completing this process. And of course, this will allow us to have these officers collectively work across the entire city limits without limitations, which is what we faced under the CDBG grant. The total cost for this transition is going to be approximately $391,000, and so we're looking to make this move this next fiscal year.
Okay, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Steve, I visited with our city manager here last week and, you know, from my perspective, code enforcement is still struggling a bit. And I know we've transitioned them into a new management style and a different department and all that, but it just seems to me that we're still having some issues getting things done. I've been calling about these old houses over here on 37th for months and we're still looking at them. And I would like to see some information brought back to the council about when a structure is declared to be a public safety issue, about how we move forward on that and maybe shorten the process up. Where we've got a building that's about to collapse, if somebody goes in there, kids or, you know, whoever in that building collapses on them, then we have a responsibility with respect to that. And we need to know exactly what our legal positions are on that, because it's been, it's taken forever for us to do something on this structure over here, then half of it's on the ground already. And here, not too many weeks ago, we had the issue of the old music hall, which we, and your department had decided that that was a public safety issue, and they have refused to put the screening fence in and they sued us in district court, I guess. But I still think we have some authority under the public safety rules that are set out by the state constitution. So we need to look at that and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do to protect public safety.
Absolutely, Councilman. And we can provide, we can provide you that information on some of the changes that we've made in relation to dilapidated buildings, to buildings that we deem hazardous, the buildings that have recently caught fire and things like that. So we've made some pretty significant changes there. There is always room for improvement, and when we talk about code enforcement, we've also made some positive changes there in how we're operating. But I do wanna remind the council that, you know, we're dealing, we have 32 officers to cover this entire city. They cover, each officer covers approximately five miles, five square miles. That's a lot of space to cover. And so we're trying to be more proactive in that approach. We're trying to get out ahead of things, but things still fall through the cracks and we're working through those. And so we're looking to continue to move those things forward in a positive manner.
Steve, so a couple of things. So why are we having to remove the funding from CDBG?
So under the CDBG, those positions are limited to the area that they can actually enforce. And so, and there's a lot of different restrictions that are placed under the CDBG grant, which actually doesn't allow them to do several things that are required of a code enforcement officer.
Okay, so they'll be more efficient.
Yes.
So those monies will then be able to be utilized elsewhere within the CDBG grant guidelines, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, great, so we will take advantage of those monies.
Absolutely.
Elsewhere. Okay, second is we, let's see, there was a certain amount of money allotted for demolition to Councilman Pusley's point, for demolition. And I want to say we increased that in the last several years, I think, I'm not sure. But I think that is a big, that's part of the other piece of the puzzle to this conversation in terms of structures, right, that may need to come down. A lot of it goes into a legal, on a legal path and we have to wait and abide. But my understanding and recollection was, we may not have enough funding under demolition to take care of the needs that you're hearing about. Is that, or can you give us a little bit?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Al address that.
Okay.
My operating budget for demolition, well, for everything we do in code enforcement is about 600 grand. We were able to pull about 200 grand from our, carryover about 200 grand from fiscal year '23, but just the other day, we demolished, or in the process of demolishing a building, there was like 150 grand. And the building next to it that we want to demolish is about 150 grand. So it's not a lot of money to, so to Councilman Pusley's point, yes, when a building is declared a nuisance or a public health hazard, we automatically issue an emergency demolition order and we try to get the building down. But even when we sometimes take down residential, that's like, you know, 20 grand. So it eats up a lot of money fast. And so, yes, money is an issue, and of course, we'll be talking about that in this upcoming session for people and more money.
Right. Well, and to that point, and we'll talk about that more in the budget, but to that point, I think it would be, I think it would be advantageous for you or Peter or however it works, but to give us an update, so we know, hey, we just allocated, forget about the actual demolition, we just allocated 150,000 from that budget to demolish whatever this building, or $20,000. Just keep us in the loop so that we know, this is getting eaten away and it gets eaten away pretty quickly.
Great point.
And then that may be something we need to address.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, Steve, you answered the question about how many officers do we have? You said 32 officers, so, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so what does that equate to as far, do we, for each district? I mean, I know who mine is, you know, my lead officer, but does that mean that, what, how many officers are there per district?
We break those up to approximately four to five officers per district.
Okay. And, you know, you mentioned that it's a five-mile radius, that it's, you're right, it's a lot of area. But I do see the difference whenever you did change, I guess, your format or how it was done, because now that I do have, or that we have dedicated, you know, lead officers, it seems like, it seems like we're getting, you know, to those issues a lot quicker. The only issue right now that I do have is the 3-1-1. I've used it and I've, and I usually, you know, encourage others to use the 3-1-1 app. But I see so much improvement that could be made on that. Is there, what is it that we can do that can improve that process? Because, you know, things are reported on there and it says that it's taken care of and it's not. What, what's?
Are you talking about in relation to code enforcement with the 3-1-1?
Yes, in relation to code enforcement, yes.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but if you would send me those specific issues as they occur, I can definitely run those down and look into them.
And Steve, I do it as my way of, you know, touch base. Like, I wanna make sure, like, what, you know, every constituent, I mean, instead of just calling me, or I can call, you know, I can call Thomas, right? But not every average person knows, you know, who the lead person is and take the time to look. So I guess one of them was just, you know, illegal parking, you know, on one of, you know, the yards and all that. And I think, I wanna say it was like a week before I actually had to call and say, well, what happened? Like, I never received on the 3-1-1, listen, they're legally parked, or whatever the issue was, I had to personally call and say, what happened to this? And that's just one, but I guess I'll see about, you know, keeping a record and letting y'all know, but.
Well, I'll look into those. I'll look into those, Councilwoman, because we track those calls as they come in and from the time they're open to the time they're closed. So we'll be able to look to see exactly what's happening there. We'll follow up on that.
And I guess, well, the point is, you know, is it that we need more? Or, I didn't know. I didn't know what, but I guess we'll.
I'll provide you an answer to that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, thank you. You know, last time we got into this, we were talking about the efficiencies between code enforcement, the legal department's prosecutor's office and the municipal court in terms of adjudicating citations. And we were supposed to get a report on a metric from how many citations were done, how many were actually prosecuted and adjudicated by the municipal court. Has that metric been put in place?
Councilman Hernandez, yes. Every month, along, every month, you all should receive a report, a code enforcement report that speaks to the previous month. It goes over each district, the important issues or topics in that district. At the end of the report is what, exactly, that's in there because you asked for that and I thought all of you would benefit from that as well. But that information is kind of the last page of that month.
Okay, so I'm referring on an annual basis that are not only for ourselves, but also for the individual departments, like the prosecutor's office, like the municipal court, to see, you know, how effective we're being.
I'm sorry, say that again, I'm sorry.
I mean, is it just coming to council or is it going to the other departments?
It's just, well, it's on the website. It's just going to you to talk about how that operation is working. So if you're saying, hey, do the other departments see it to see if the process on adjudication side is working? No, I haven't connected them in, but surely I can do that.
Okay, the, you know, the aspect is to evaluate not only your own code enforcement officers, but also the process in general. It's not just for the benefit of council in the sense that, you know, you have evaluation of your own code enforcement officers is what I'm referring to, and how effective your programs are. I'll circle back with you this offline so we can go through it. Also had some interesting complaints about code enforcement and political signs that are in front of people's homes. Now, I wanna make sure that there is communication to our code enforcement officers that regardless of what political persuasion of that individual on that property would be, they cannot use their own political ideologies in writing citations.
Of course, and if it's on private property, I'm sure they all know that, but of course, I can remind them.
Unless it's a Gil Hernandez sign.
Well, I'm not referring necessarily to city signs or nonpartisan signs, but, you know, the more partisan you have, it could be a problem. I'd like to avoid that situation altogether, so it might just be a reminder to our code enforcement officers that they need to put their political views aside when making these judgments.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. We'll move on to developer participation agreements.
So this next slide refers to our developer participation agreements. This is essentially the funding that's required to reimburse the developer for the difference in constructing an oversized street or installing additional drainage. Right now, we've identified three projects to a total of about 1.2 million. This is an ongoing process, so we're still working through the details of this particular agreement, or these agreements, meaning we're still working with developers and builders to see if there's any other potential projects that we need to identify. But we're transitioning to these agreements and the operating departments will be engaging with the development community annually to build their capital improvement budget. Stand by for questions.
There are no questions, Steve.
Thank you.
Advanced funding agreements?
And I will turn it over to Neiman Young now.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a budget request for $5.7 million in support of the Surface Transportation Block Grant Set Aside Program. If council recall, on March 22, you authorized staff to pursue five projects, I'm sorry, five applications. Those applications included District 1, Oak Park routes to schools; District 2, Ocean Drive pedestrian crossing improvements; and District 3, Mary Cara High School, safe route to schools; and District 4, the Seashore Learning Center, safe route to school; and District 5, Brook Road Master Channel pedestrian improvements.
Excuse me, Dr. Young, can you hold off one second and let me have Councilman Hernandez? He has one more question on the last, the last subject, which was?
It was the developer participation agreements.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, I was trying to get your attention.
Okay.
The requirement, this is, I'm assuming this was not in the master plan for C1 collector? They were C3, I mean, what was in the master plan and why are we doing the participation agreements? Is that, are we changing what we require for those streets?
Well, in certain streets, a perfect example is the Oso Creek Parkway. The urban, the city urban transportation plan called for a parkway on that street. The developer is only required to build the C1 collector, which means that the oversizing of that, we needed funding for it. And so we found internal funding for that initial phase, but there's several other phases that will be taking place and there will be other projects. In the past, we had some monies that had been set aside for these type of projects, but they had been unutilized for several years. It wasn't until the, this year, that we started to get those requests for the oversizing of those streets, so having to pay the delta.
Okay, so I guess going back to my question, was it not in the master plan for the larger street? Or did we have the smaller street and we're asking them to build the larger street?
Both the C3 and the C1 are in the master plan. They are in the master plan. What Steve is saying is that on UTP streets, like it says at the beginning, or on oversized streets like taking a C1, which is developers required to do to any larger street, they had always hit the participation bucket to say, hey, if you want me to build this larger street, participate in paying for it. And the city has done that for many years.
Okay, so maybe I'm not understanding this clearly. So we require a collector, right, in the master plan, but we only require a C1 collector, not a C3 collector? Or do we, or is the master plan have a C3 collector and we're participating to make it a C3 collector? What are you referring to?
So I guess where you are off track, if that's the right word, is that you're relating this to the master plans. You'd be better relating this to the UTP, right, which is the urban transportation plan, which many, I wanna say many years ago, people like yourself said, hey, we want these streets over here, those streets over there. On the urban, on the urban transportation plan are usually arterials, very large collectors, and that's what, for example, our Oso Parkway is a UTP street. And we have participated, we, the city of Corpus Christi, has participated with developers to go from their C1 requirement to the 80-foot right-of-way of the parkway. We've done that for years and that's what this, that's what this.
Okay, so I guess my misunderstanding is that the master plan for streets and the UTP are two separate documents that don't correspond to each other.
They do relate to some extent, but, but, how can I say this? They do relate to some extent, except for, and I'll say it this way, except for the UTP goes outside the city limits and our master plan does not.
Okay, so these are specifically for stuff outside the city limit?
Not necessarily, but I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm having difficulty explaining to you.
So I guess the question is, why aren't they exactly the same in terms of the requirements for the street?
I'm sorry, why, one more.
Why is it not the exact same requirement in the master plan and the uniform transportation plan? I mean, if you're asking for a specific street per master plan and it's not the same-sized street in the UTP, please tell me why there's not the case.
Because, and hopefully this explains it, because UTP streets are all over the city of Corpus Christi and running across any land, right? When that land is purchased by a developer, again, in his development, he's only required to build a certain-sized collector. If that collector aligns with the UTP that says, oh, that's great, but we really prefer you build this-sized street, that's exactly what this is for. So you said, why don't they align? We always, we have attempted to make them align through processes like this. Still confusing?
I think we maybe need to do some work ahead of, before it gets to this, or we're having to ask developers to oversize something that's not in the plan?
Oh, I don't understand what you mean, not in the plan.
Well, if it's not in the plan, I mean, you're not giving me a good description of this. We have, we have two separate plans, right? A master plan and a UTP. Is it two separate plans, correct?
Okay. Sorry.
Gabe Reno, that's Assistant Director of Public Works. So the UTP and the master plan are the same document. I think he was trying to refer to the UDC. So the UTP or the master plan, you may have a street that's an A1, an arterial or a collector. The UDC.
Gabe, can you speak more into?
Sorry, the UDC only mandates that the developer is only responsible up to a C1. So even if that UTP has a C3 or A1 and arterial, the developer is only required to build a C1. So this is where we come in, instead of him building a half a street, we allow the street participation in order to build the full section of that C3 or that arterial. So this is what that funding is.
Okay, so now that, that's what I thought it was. He threw me for a loop here that the plans were different. Okay, so the UTP and the master plan should be the same, except one extends outside the city limits.
No, there's.
They should be the same, right?
They're both the same. There's no more UTP, it's just the master plan.
Okay, so that's what I thought it was, all right? So now I'm not confused about that anymore. So the UDC only requires, is that for a C1?
Correct, sir.
Okay, and if we wanted to match the master plan, we have to participate in it?
Correct, come up with that additional money.
That was the answer I was looking for, thank you.
Okay. Move on to advanced funding agreements with Tech Dot.
Thank you, madam, madam, Mayor. This is a request in support of five projects, which is also known as by the city as a safe route to school project. Basically, five projects in all five council districts that will make, that will utilize crosswalks and other safety amenities to accommodate pedestrian traffic. It is a cost of $5.7 million, but it should be noted that the grant is 80% reimbursable. So what we need is the money upfront with the understanding that once the project's completed and constructed, we'll be receiving $3.9 million back.
Thank you. Collective bargaining agreement, fire.
Okay, hello again. So this is a very, just brief, as you can see one line in this, for the collective bargaining agreement, as we have recently kind of wrapped up the negotiations and come to tentative agreements on all the articles with it. However, there's still some redlining that has to be done. on all the articles with it, however, there's still some redlining that has to be done. I think they're fixing some things on some benefits, and then we'll be getting it to the association for them to have their education sessions, and then put it to the membership for a vote. So, approximately right now, what we're looking at for the anticipated first-year costs is between 4.5 and 5.5 million for the salary benefits, different pays that are associated with the articles that have been agreed to. Comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that...
Collective bargaining for police.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. This slide is the 2025 budget obligations for the collective bargaining agreement signed last year. So, anticipated total cost of 2.2 million. That includes a 3% increase effective in April of next year. Nonvoluntary overtime, remember, we started paying double time on, on some of these events, which has helped tremendously, by the way. And one-time stipend in October of this year, about $2,000 per officer, plus TMRS and benefits of $1.2 million. I stand by for any questions.
No questions, Chief?
Thank you. I think I stay here for the next...
We have a question.
Sure.
Councilman Putzley.
When will that stipend be paid?
Stipend is October in the new budget.
October?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. We have police staffing plan.
Great. Staffing plan, the first slide here, you'll see some historical reference over the last five years. You have grown the department, I anticipated 25, but you actually grew by 54. You'll see that Peter and hopefully you all, Peter has a dozen, another five for next year, thank you, I hope you all agree with that, bringing this up to 506. Actual strength as of today is 471. We have an anticipated academy starting in July 15 of 35. There will be some attrition in the academy, which is normal. You'll see, we have a few pending retirements. Now, this is a fiscal year analysis, so before October, we have three on the board to retire. I do have two in, in...
I'm so sorry, did you say three?
Three on the, yes, anticipating retirement between now and October 1, the end of the fiscal year. I do have two laterals in the process right now. They're not included in these numbers, so that's a good thing. One from Marlington, good officer, a few years on. Average annual attrition is about 25 officers. Again, the 84th Academy should start about July 15. That's a great thing, 35 officers, maybe, might be able to squeeze out a few more if we have a bigger list and we can get budget to approve to collect these extra few that we're looking for. You'll see here that, again, this is a historical data of what was planned over the 5 over 5 and what was actually done is, you'll see, there's 55 instead of 54 because we remember last year, we acquired one more budgeted position in our RODF Task Force. That was, that was a good thing. That's based on our performance. Officer did a terrific job over there.
Councilman Hernandez.
Chief, what's your ratio per thousand, I guess it's one officer per thousand citizens, or...
We're about 1.7 right now, if I believe right.
And that's what you're, what are you trying to get to?
Well, we're trying to get to a balance of being effective. Your, your per-thousand capita rate is just one benchmark of, of standardization, I guess you could say. And it depends on cities around the nation. Some northern cities run three, three per thousand, average is two. That's, that's a big number. We're, we're heading that way. We've grown 54, we'll grow another 25 over this next five-year period, find our balance and equilibrium, where there's some infill of capital investments as you grow. So, I think you all have done a tremendous job. I'm not just saying that. We have moved in the growth area, we're, we're doing well.
Are you seeing crime statistics go down?
Crime statistics have flattened out. Our violent crimes have flattened out. We're only about 1% over last year, and last year was about 12% under the year before, so it is cyclic. Our property crimes are, remain pretty high. One category, aggravated assault, is a little high, but our homicides are down, our sexual assaults are down. So, we're, we're, we're being pretty effective.
Are you seeing a direct correlation between the number of officers you have on, on staff versus your crime statistics?
I can make a nebulous association at best with that, but I do think that more officers on the street, more visibility, more units on the street that the public can see does affect your crime rates, does affect your criminal aspects in neighborhoods. When, when people see officers in neighborhoods, they, they do act differently.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm looking is, we got to be able to quantify expenditures, so if we can get some sort of analytics on this, it would be, it'd be helpful to us as a council.
Sure, but I'll tell you, every chief in, in this nation and world will tiptoe around whether they take credit for crime rates going up or down because it is cyclic. I will, I will tell you that we are low as far as an industry standard goes. I'll tell you, we have a lot of, we have a lot of movement to make as far as getting out in the neighborhoods, adding officers, that's a must, even, even if the numbers continue to drop.
I think it also includes your, your prosecution and your court system as well.
It has a whole lot to do with it, and I have no control over those things.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Chief Markle, do you have a backlog on, on your vehicles?
We do. That's been a tremendous struggle. We've talked this year...
Yeah, yeah, there's a slide on vehicles.
I bring that up because of the proactive, you know, we believe in the proactive policing, but I know, what, what is the situation on that?
It's coming around, you know, COVID put a, just put a complete stop to production of vehicles, so we've had utilized vehicles well over their shelf life and mileage. They've picked up some afterwards. Now, last year, the UAW strike killed all our Chevy Tahos. So, it's been one thing after another, really, and that's not just Corpus Christi, that's nationwide, cities buying over vehicles. This year, we hope to put in a large order. We've worked with the city manager to have an extra 40 units purchased, and hopefully the buy board will accommodate us with that.
So, I guess, you know, and I'm sitting here thinking about, my true question is, are those vehicles, the reason I care about the vehicles is because, are those additional vehicles or replacements?
Some are replacement, but these 40 will be additional.
40?
Over, over your additional vehicle allotment, we're working to hire, to purchase 40 extra fully-equipped vehicles. And I'll show you that in the slide, because of catch-up. Because of growth, because of vehicles over shelf life, we shouldn't be driving them. We have to pull those out of the fleet and replace them, and grow at the same time.
Okay. So, you're having to drive them right now?
Right now, we're having to drive them, something we shouldn't be, quite frankly.
But what's going to happen if you don't get those 40 and you've got the people? What happens?
Well, I'll show you. Hopefully, hopefully we get all we're asking for, which will be 76. We'll just get, one more slide and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
So, this is your 5 over 5 plan up through fiscal year 2029. There'll be an additional 25 officers, starting with fiscal year 25.
Okay.
And then, you want to move to vehicles?
Let me get a couple of answer, a couple of questions here.
Sure.
Councilman Roy, did you have something?
My questions and Gil's are about the same.
About the same, okay, all righty. Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, this is kind of out of the blue, but, but as your staffing has grown steadily the last few years, have you seen, notice, I don't know if you have metrics on this, on the, has there been an increase in the longevity of individual officers staying in the department? That, my, my, off the top of my head, I would think, guess that if you're understaffed, let's say you were understaffed, let's say, five or 10 or 20 years ago, that that is going to lead to more burnout and people leaving, a great deal more turnover. Have you seen less of that? I don't know if you keep that metric or not.
Less burnout, no. What we're seeing are what was predicted many years ago, and probably all of us went to some management school or not with the millennials and these generations, they, they stay in jobs eight or nine years and move on. So, we have started to see that. We have some, you know, the, the guy like myself, 35, 36 years, that those are becoming more and more rare, honestly. You know, so you, I think our younger generations do move around a little more gypsy-oriented, they want to do, they want to do different things, they want to jump to different cities, eh?
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, it's something they, they tell you was going to happen, and it happened in every industry, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter where you're at. But do I have something to quantify? You know, the additional hires with, with leaving early? I do not, Councilman.
Thanks.
Councilman Putzley.
Yeah, so Chief, I, I missed a number a while ago. You currently have 501 positions approved for hiring...
Budgeted, correct.
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yes.
And you said your staff right now is what?
Sworn staff, 471 right now.
471 right now.
And 35, starting an academy in July.
Okay, that 471, does that include the academy that just graduated too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 471. Yeah, and you're right, I mean, they, several years ago, they called all of us managers in and went through the different age groups, and they said, just get ready because this group doesn't stay around long. They, they're not like all of us guys that work 40 years in the same place.
And the right thing to do with that was to become an agency that attracts those that are leaving other agencies, which is what you all did, when you expanded our ability to lateral transfer. That's why I, I've, I've captured two this last year, I have two more in, in the pipe right now, so.
Good.
When they're going to leave, if they're, if they're good officers, they have no troubled history or anything, then we want to collect those, just like they're leaving here.
Sure, thank you.
Councilwoman Combs?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask about the homeless, I guess, department, or what do you call it? I don't know even though, if it is a department, but I know that you all just started adding more officers to that unit, or what do you call that?
Well, we have a crisis intervention unit and a homeless outreach unit. They're, they're combined, but...
How, how many do you have in that unit?
Right now, we have four.
And how, I mean, I know it's...
Plus, plus a whole lot of overtime paid by hospital district fund officers.
Okay, and, and specifically, how is that new position, the one that now is, is just solely, you know, focusing on just the homeless? How, is that just one officer right now?
You talking about Art Brown? Yes, that, that, he's the one that wears a nondescript uniform, not making arrests, doing outreach. That's doing very well, very, very good feedback on that.
Because it's only been since the beginning of the year, right?
Yes.
And, and do you foresee that, because it's going so well, that maybe you might be increasing? Or how does that happen? Do, do the officers have to apply to that unit, or how does...
Well, we, we want to cherry pick those officers, you know, based on their demeanor and how they interact and those types of things. Chief Shauer oversees that. I just added another officer with a calming dog. Did you, I don't know if you've seen Justice? It's a, yeah, it's a great, great tool. You'd be surprised how quick people change their demeanor with a calming dog, rather than a traditional canine that you see as a tracking bite dog, those kinds of things. This is a calming dog, it's a golden retriever, paid for through the foundation. It's a, I know, maybe something that, you know, you think, well, that's kind of crazy, but it's not. These things work very well. You bring them out to a critical incident, you bring them out to the homeless, they are, they are, they quickly establish a relationship for you.
Well, I hope that we will be able to expand that, because I think, I mean, I've been hearing some positive things, and I just, you know, I don't know if it's just me that hear, you know, about one officer, but, but now it seems like there's, you know, with the, when I call Neighborhood Services, because it's, it's a nondescriptive, you know, not wearing the uniform, I, I think it's, it's, he's more approachable, I guess?
That's the intent, that is the intent, yeah.
And, and I was just hoping that, you know, the public realizes that, that there is at least more ways to, you know, to call or approaches whenever there is, you know, a homeless individual or individuals in, in the area, that we now have a dedicated officer that can be called at the same time when Neighborhood Services are called. So, just thank you for that, and, and hopefully we'll continue to hear some good things.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, Chief Markle, let's go to, I didn't realize you had a whole page on vehicles.
Oh, no worries. So, this is a police vehicle overview, right now, with the staffing that we, 501, this was made before that, but we would need 240 marked units to operate. We currently have 143 marked units available for operations. Average number of units, you see, I'm going to read the slide, is, we have them down for service every day, all changes, those routine maintenances to keep these things alive and well as, as long as possible. 48 of those are well over the 120,000-mile mark or the year mark that we should be looking at replacement. Of course, the average cost of a fully-upfitted vehicle is astronomical right now, just because of the competitive environment, $92 to $100,000 per vehicle.
Vehicle?
Right, that's, that's remarkable to me, looking back just five years. We do have fiscal year 2023 vehicles in, they're being outfitted on, right now, there's 34 Tahos and two F-150s. Hopefully, they're on their way soon. Over the next several weeks, we should be seeing some of those in fuse. And last year, when the UAW strike hit, they canceled all of our Chevys, and luckily, Chief White has a good relationship with some folks, and we were able to get 35 F-150 pursuit trucks instead, and one Tahoe. We should get those at the end of this year, and we'll work on upfitting on those. In 2025, our regular order of 36 vehicles will happen. That's just the, the vehicles without upfitting, that's why you see that 1.4 million that we're asking for, for those costs, to get those up and running as quickly as possible, rather than transitioning old equipment into them. And we're also asking for an additional $4 million for 40 patrol, or pursuit-rated vehicles above what our normal is, to get us to the, a proper operating number.
Wow.
And that way, when we see these officers, they hit the street, they actually have a car to drive. You'll have more presence, you'll have your officers in neighborhoods. You can't just, again, you can't just hire officers and officers without the backfilling of the capital equipment that needs, they need.
So, is this a concern we need to be concerned with? Which is, you know, we continue to have the academies, but is there a point? Do you, do you feel that there is a point coming that, you know, we're going to have, that that may become an issue because you have nowhere to put them in terms of the vehicles?
It is an issue, that's why, that's, that's why we're here. This was part of the plan, and this is, this is the time in this growth plan where we're going to ask for vehicles. We worked with the city manager.
But if you're, I mean, that's part of the plan, not knowing, right, that this whole issue with the vehicles was going to happen, so...
Correct, and, and again, we're, we're, we've adapted well. But again, we fight with Houston, San Antonio, Austin, every other major city in the state for these same vehicles, just like we do applicants. So, we're going to get on the buy board, I hope, with, for a request of 76 total vehicles in this run, which should open up, the board should open up at the end of this month, at the beginning of June. Hopefully, they'll accommodate that. Remember, they run fleet vehicles, or police vehicles, once a year.
So, Chief Markle, and I have to ask, because you have 34 Tahos and two F-150s, so what's, when you say police vehicles, is there anything in particular, any type? Because there are multiple different ones, right?
Sure.
That are easily, I guess, more attained than maybe the truck or the, or the Tahoe?
What, what you see is what's the easiest Tahos, when we bought those, were the easiest and most readily available. The 36 F-150s that you saw were initially Tahos, but the UAW strike canceled them. We got a call from Chevy, said, we're not making your police vehicles. Luckily, Ford was able to up production for their police vehicle run, and we switched over to Ford. So, and when that happens, now we have to buy different cages and different light bars, and those upfitting has to change. But again, this, this environment of shifting vehicles, and there are every manufacturer, Chrysler, Ford, Chevy, make police vehicles.
What is the sedan that you use?
Right now, we, it's a Ford. The, the smaller one is a Ford, the larger one's a Tahoe, Chevy Tahoe.
Okay, let me get some of these questions. Councilman Roy.
Chief, I noticed that primarily, it looks like you're talking about your trucks and SUVs. In terms of your motorcycles, is that, is that demand or those type of vehicles, is that, is that pretty much, I don't want to use the word stagnant, but do you need more of that type of vehicle too? Or is that something you're phasing out?
Not phasing out, growing it. We bought two more last year to grow that unit to 12 motor officers, really because some of our PPV vehicles were canceled, so we, we wanted to buy, we want to get our officers out there, visible, working on a vehicle, so, and bicycles, you know, we bought, I have a whole lot of bicycles for neighborhoods. I want to get them out there in the field, one way or the other. But we need to get cars for them, Councilman, we need, we need units for them, and that's why we're coming with this request. But yes, that's, that's a great thought, same as Enduros, the small mini bikes that you see running around. Anything that'll transport our officers into the neighborhoods to do their job is what we're looking at. And that really, it's not a doomsday mentality, but it is what it is, and we're, we're working hard to, to adjust to the environment and, and keep providing quality service.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Putzley.
Okay, in, in a perfect world...
Yes, sir.
Where we're getting... Okay, in, in, in a perfect world, where we're getting vehicles like we need them, how many do you normally order over and above what you need running on the street?
Over and above, it's just been replacement, and not, and it's not been met in the last several years.
Okay, so I, I visited with Peter about this, because I've heard this from some of your officers. We, we don't really keep what I would call a, an extra couple of vehicles. So if you have a vehicle that's involved in an accident, or if you have one that has to go in the shop for repair, you, you need some extra pool cars, if you will, to put officers back on the street?
Historically, we, we have.
Okay.
Up until COVID and up until the UAW strike. But yes, you're exactly right. We've always had cars in key, ready to go.
Okay.
And you trade in your unit for service. Like I said, there's fifteen units out to anyone day for oil changes and brake jobs and those kind of things.
So in, under normal circumstances, you do keep?
We would have a large pool, and this number two forty includes twenty for the pool.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, Chief, the vehicle you have pictured here, are you referring that as a one fifty, or is this the?
No, no, that's a Ford, that's a Ford Interceptor sedan.
Interceptor sedan, which is.
Yeah, it's an Explorer.
It's an Explorer.
Beefed up, brakes, alternate system, you know, to run electric, all those things.
Right, so are you still purchasing this on top of the Tahos, or?
When we can get them. We, we picked the run that is, that is available.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're getting either or. It's not.
Either or, so it could be the, the sedan, it could be the Chevy Tahoe, or it could be the Ford F-150, which is a four-door pickup truck.
Right, right. I've seen them out there, so I, I guess what I was looking at is this vehicle versus the, the Tahoe, is being similar vehicles, and are you seeing them as two different types, or?
Well, one's a Chevy, one's a Ford, so they do require different, you know, cages and plastic inserts and those types of things, wiring harnesses for your electronics.
I mean, so I, I guess it's just whatever's available, right?
That is exactly right.
So are we?
What's available, you grab it.
So when you're making your procurement request, is it for either or, or is it's?
Well, we'll get on the board with an X amount of number of vehicles, and what Chris will get back is we have X amount of these, X amount of these. Or we may get, hey, I got seventy-six Tahos available for you, but, and we're gonna grab it. If we don't, if we don't, they're not gonna be there.
Okay, so I guess what I was, my question is, I just want to make sure you weren't limiting yourself to a certain type of vehicle, because you like.
We're certainly not. No, we, we'll make do. They're all good vehicles, and we'll make do with, with whatever one we get.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. Ninety-two thousand dollars for an outfitted vehicle in the police department is pretty good, in my opinion. I mean, compared to what, five years ago? Y'all were able to do it to a point about eighty-five thousand or so. So I know that it's shocking that it's that much higher, but.
Still a big number.
For someone who just bought a new vehicle, I would say that the prices that you're getting are a lot better than the prices that we're getting, so good job.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chief Markle, great, thank you.
Can I just add to that? So Chief Markle and I have talked, so if we have to come to City Council to authorize the placement of the big order, we're gonna do that.
The placement of what?
We can't wait, so it may be in June or July. We may look, we may have to use some undesignated fund balance to secure.
I'm sorry, you said the placement of what?
To put the placement of the vehicle order for the police department, right? Because as the chief said, it opens up in June, and we can't wait till September, October, we'll lose out, so.
Right.
If it requires City Council approval to place the order and designate funds, we're gonna bring that to City Council. It's gonna be out of the budget cycle, but you heard the chief, we need the vehicles, and we can't mess around. Right, so we will just, then just to put it on the radar, if you see an agenda item, obviously, we'll brief you ahead of time, but it's for this reason.
Thank you, Peter, for that clarity, yes.
Right, we have to place the order, and if we need to back it with funds, we'll be doing that.
And I appreciate you being receptive. It's important, you know, that, you know, the, the banks open up long before the budget is done. So, you know, you can cross your fingers.
Right.
But you, you can't order and not, not accept. You know, I could order and then hope I get the budget, but if I don't, they're not gonna put me on the bank for that many next year.
Right.
Frank, so, there's a lot of new ones to.
Yeah.
I think if you could let the council know as soon as, well, maybe a reminder, because it's coming.
Yeah.
It's in June?
June.
End of May, early June. Chief White will let me know, you know, when the bank opens up, he'll be, he'll be there getting his bid in.
Okay.
Getting on board.
Ready, yep.
And with that, I'll give Chief White.
Thank you, Chief Markle. So now we'll move on to fire four-person staffing continuance.
Okay, hello again. So this part of the presentation is showing our four-person staffing initiative that we, the city has been committed to prior to my arrival, and then one of the top priorities, as I said when I came on, was to continue the four-person staffing push to help bring us up to the national standards of what you'll see as our metropolitan cities having four-person staffing. So currently, right now, we have twenty-two fire apparatus. That's our engines, our rescue hazmat, and our ladder companies out in the field, and our chief vehicles. So we have eight of the twenty-two apparatus, has four-person staffing, which leaves us with the remaining fourteen apparatus with three-person staffing, is what we're carrying with the minimum. So we have additional seventy-eight firefighters that we will need to achieve the four-person staffing across the board. That seventy-eight comes through with a staffing factor in which you have to hire in order to achieve your four-person staffing. As of today, our sworn firefighter positions that we are authorized is four hundred and fifty-five. That's where we currently sit today, and that would be four fifty-five without any vacancies. So if you look at our five-year plan, what we put on the board was looking to continue to hire at least sixteen firefighters this year, and putting that in the budget, and then repeating that through year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and then fifteen and fifteen respectively, and twenty-eight and twenty-nine, to bring us to that total of seventy-eight. It was a couple of weeks ago that we came to the council to seek approval to be able to apply for the SAFER grant that was out there. We have submitted that application. That would be to hire that seventy-eight positions. That would be hired within about, within two years. The funding will cover up the firefighter salaries and benefits if we're awarded the SAFER grant for three years. So we were looking for that. That would help us achieve four-person staffing, of course, much sooner. If you look at how that five-year plan would work out, this is just for the, the adding of the sixteen, 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 and fifteen, fifteen. It'll show our sworn authorized count there in the minimum, and then on the right side, that would show how we would slowly increase the number of units with four-person staffing. Again, so we're being fiscally responsible, and also managing the overtime that it does take to, to achieve the staffing while we add the additional personnel.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, just for my sake of my bad memory, just reiterate again, the four-person staff, this is a significant safety issue, is that correct?
It is a significant safety issue for firefighters, but it also, they've done numerous studies, early two thousand, some of the recent one, two thousand and tens, that has shown that putting four-person staffing versus three-person staffing, there's an increase in efficiency by almost twenty-five percent. That's from pulling hose lines to put the fire out, which now with the new type of products in everybody's houses, which are synthetics and plastics, flashovers occurring inside a house between three minutes and five minutes of a fire starting. So the quicker we can get trucks to there, the quicker we can pull lines, do our searches for the occupancy, four-person staffing is showing a twenty-five percent increase in efficiency from the three-person.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, we're looking at the reorganization, which we'll be proposing of the fire department. So our current structure right now for the command level, the executive team, which is the, myself, the deputy chief, and the assistant chiefs. We have one fire chief, one deputy chief, and four assistant chiefs. The challenge that we're facing, and you'll see it in a org structure here shortly, is our assistant chief over operations has thirteen battalion chiefs reporting to him. That's twelve battalion chiefs that are out in the field across the three shifts, so four battalion chiefs each shift, reporting to that one assistant chief of operations. That is a large span of control. If you look at span of control in, in any organization, it's usually about three to seven, with five being optimal. We are way outside that range. We have an expanding workforce that we have been committed to over the past number of years and still looking to increase. Also, we have an increased call volume. That is extremely taxing upon one assistant chief, and there's really no other way to break that down. Having been an operations chief in a large city, what you'll see is we're proposing with shift commanders, even having shift commanders, the phone rings off the hook, nonstop. Having thirteen battalion chiefs reporting to you that have large responsibility, it is a lot to manage for, for one chief, and it's becoming a point that it's not very manageable. So our proposed structure, what we're looking at is one fire chief, having two deputy chiefs, one over administrative roles, the fire marshal's office, training, facilities, fleet, and then a deputy chief over operations, which will then allow us to have three shift commanders of assistant chiefs out in the field, and three assistant chiefs running our administrative sections. Also, another thing that is being highly sought out, that we're trying to take off the plates of the battalion chiefs, is a role that this organization used to have, which was a field medical officer. We have about forty-eight thousand medical incidents a year. We have critical calls. We have many paramedics in the field that are looking for support, guidance on protocols, dealing with the hospital liaisons when the hospitals are filled up. And we used to have that position. It was taken away a couple of years ago, it transitioned into another position. We're gonna be looked to getting that back, those positions back, so it alleviates that role off those battalion chiefs that haven't been medics in years, and we'll have a more specialized captain over the EMS side of the house every shift. So with that proposal, you're looking at the current structure. And there you see the fire chief going down, the deputy chief, and the executive team below that, and the one ops chief with thirteen battalion chiefs. The new proposed organizational structure would look more like this. Where you see the green, those are the new positions to help us in our span of control, in our command and control, which would give us a deputy chief over operations, and then the three shift commanders. Each one of those shift commanders would have four battalion chiefs under them. This, again, is a best practice that you're gonna see in not only the metropolitan fire departments, you see it in smaller departments, where you have a shift commander that is responsible for the overall staffing and emergency operations for that shift. And then over to the side, you see the three field medical officers. That will be our subject matter experts in all things for medical protocol, dealing with the hospitals, and ambulance, medic, kind of resource allocation, because we run a lot of medical calls in the day. Stand by for any questions.
Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Chief. So this new org chart, I assume it would be built to grow? So if you get those seventy-eight additional positions in the next two and a half years, it could be absorbed within this current org chart?
Yes, those seventy-eight positions that we're looking to add with the SAFER grant and increasing for four-person staffing, those are gonna be at the firefighter one levels that are going directly to the fire station. That's how the plan is to achieve that. So it would fit under those. Again, it'd allow those battalion chiefs that are trying to do multiple roles to manage their people as they get increased staffing. Yes, sir.
And the, the field medical officers, that's what was formerly six twenty-three?
That was the infamous six twenty-three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, Chief, you're reducing the responsibilities of your deputy chief and assistant chiefs, is that correct?
Am I reducing the responsibility?
Right. As you're, kind of like you're adding two assistant chief positions and an additional deputy chief position, right?
Right, so right now, I wouldn't say I'm reducing the responsibility. I believe we are setting the responsibility at the correct level for the assistant chief over ops, moving it to a deputy position, based on the amount of stuff that has to be handled. So I don't see where we have any reduction, and having a shift commanders that are over the entire emergency operations for like an A shift, that is an increased responsibility of daily staffing, personnel management, notifications to the executive team. It's not a reduction.
Okay, so you're adding responsibilities and people?
There, there will be additional duties that are just sort of being picked up by different battalion chiefs at this time. When you look at how, because there's not a single leader, a shift commander on each shift, the duties are just kind of picked up by battalion one, or battalion four, battalion three. There's no lead for that. It all goes up to one assistant chief that is trying to manage thirteen battalion chiefs.
Okay, so the responsibilities for your battalion chiefs are gonna go down?
It will go down a little bit, in which they won't be responsible for the exact daily staffing of the entire shift. Right now, there's actually one battalion chief that tries to manage all of the daily staffing for it, yet on top of all the other duties they have. So three other battalion chiefs don't do that, so it's almost inequity of responsibility when you look at it right now. So we're trying to right-size the responsibilities into the appropriate rank, so it can be managed effectively.
Okay, are you gonna change your pay structure for these positions with this new org chart, or are you gonna keep them the same?
The pay structure would change based on the promotion. So whomever would take the deputy chief spot, which would have to manage the shifts, that pay, that pay structure goes up, probably to right-size it with the amount of duties they're doing right now. And then those that are doing all of the daily staffing right now, trying to report when there's critical incidents to the executive team, that will be right-sized by a promotion opportunity to the assistant chief rank, which would be a shift commander.
Okay, maybe I'm not making myself clear here. You're gonna have more people doing the same amount of work?
We are gonna have more people finally doing the work efficiently and managing the people right now. We do not have the structure where we can handle everything that's going on. One person, if you're managing thirteen people at this level, you're, we're missing stuff. We're missing proper notifications. Why? Because we're expecting a battalion chief that's tied to an incident as an incident commander to make these. When you have a shift commander that's overseeing the operations of the whole city, we're missing it.
You're, you're making sense, right?
Right.
One person can effectively control five or six people, right? In, you know, within maximum efficiency of, of your span of control. I get it. That's not what I'm asking here. What I'm asking here is that, okay, so you've identified a problem, and you're gonna add people to address those problems, so you're reducing their workload on an individual basis for those individual positions. So that way, they have more of a direct span of control over the individual, over the groups that are in, so they'll be more effective. So you're relieving them of some duties, so they can be more effective.
Yes, so, but I don't see that as, it depends on how you want to look at it. We can say, we're gonna realign this and take this piece of responsibility off you and put it to the correct position, which allows them to get more work done and not miss things on the other duties as assigned, if that makes sense. So I, I will never want to say, like, they're gonna have more time to sit at a kitchen table or on a deal. They're actually gonna be able to focus and do the job such as personnel management, the training that they need to be out there doing for critical incidents. So we're not necessarily reducing it. We're putting the responsibilities to the right level and right rank, where we can actually have quality of management and quality of leadership.
Okay, I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish here, right?
I just can't agree to that we're lowering what they're going to do. We're not lowering what they're going to do. We're right-sizing the responsibilities in the, to the, the positions.
Okay, Chief, the challenge that we have, and this is not on, on you, right? And you, because you're adding some layers of management here, right? Instead of making it leaner, you're kind of spreading it out. And one of the biggest knocks that we've had on us as a city is the size of the expansion of the amount of personnel that we have within, within the city. I think Councilman Hunter pointed it out on several occasions, that we, you know, five years ago, we were three thousand, now we're at four thousand five hundred people, right? So there's some requirements that were aspect of that, but, so we gotta make sure we justify how we put this in together. So when you're asking for senior-level people, and a significant amount of them, I want to make sure that we're pretty clear on what the duties and responsibilities are, and if we're, you know, just adding a layer of bureaucracy versus efficiency. So, and a consummate with the pay that we're providing these individuals. So I want to make sure we're perfectly clear on that, so.
Absolutely, totally understand. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, and again, this is, hasn't been fully vetted out yet. This is the chief's initial conversation. But I would say this chief is, this is his first budget where he's had a chance to really assess the organization. Last year, how many months before, before we did the budget? I think he had just started, pretty much.
I think on arrival.
He said he was just pulling up with the truck on arrival, but, so this has given him about 12 months to assess the organization. This is his best professional recommendation
Right.
After being in the business for 20-some-odd years, so.
Yep, for sure.
But we're going to vet it out, we'll bring it, we'll bring our final recommendation.
Absolutely. And just as we said, I take it very serious, as I've told my staff, any new uniform positions that do not go to the back of a fire truck will have to be very, very well thought out, and very much needed so. So I would not be coming here with a position that wasn't adding to the four-person staff on the back of the fire truck. So I do agree, because it's a critical role.
Yeah, and I think we've had conversations before where, you know, working efficiently is obviously the goal, to be as efficient as possible. And sometimes that means a shift in not necessarily responsibility, but the span of, you know, who's doing what. And so I appreciate you bringing this forth. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, I agree. It's a lot for all of us to swallow in, you know, one setting here, so.
For sure.
Obviously, there's a lot of work to go forward here, and we appreciate what you're doing. We truly want our fire department to be part of the 21st century, and whatever it takes to do that. But there'll be many more conversations that we need to have as we move this forward.
Absolutely.
So that we understand, and maybe we'll all become firefighters or something.
We're hired. We're hired.
We've got to pass a physical, very difficult test, so.
I think we need to get in the security business as well.
The security. There you go. Mike's baiting tackle shot. Councilman Roy.
So I don't want to reiterate what the other council member said, and I certainly understand their concern, but I want to make sure, one of the things that it seems like overall what you're talking about is that in terms of efficiencies, that you want to, you want to increase that battalion level because in the past, would you consider, see, how can I put this, that they were too busy in terms of doing some of the other things that you're going to try to relieve so that they weren't performing optimally?
Correct. So you're, they're trying to do so many various responsibilities from program management, like we have a battalion chief that is over rescue. We have a battalion chief that is over the hazardous materials program, and so on and so on. And then on top of that, we have, we also need to make sure that all the staffing, all the vacation, all of that's done. By the way, you need to participate in mandatory training. You need to create training for your staff and your battalion. You need to manage incidents. Like, it's just keep piling. And what you see is, you can only do so much, and I think we can all agree where we're doing a little bit of a lot of things.
So in terms of, so that probably added staff, especially, I mean, stress, excuse me, to that group of firefighters?
Yep.
I mean, had to be increase in their stress. Did you see a trickle-down effect?
You will absolutely see a trickle-down effect. Again, it goes back to, you'll see the trickle-down effect, and it's not because it's intended, but it's challenging to have leadership with your troops when you're so busy trying to do everything else. And to give an example of things, it's like, there's certain incidents that like the executive team should be notified on, because again, we may need to notify the city manager who notifies y'all. It's hard to get notifications when all your folks that should do it are incident commanders, and they're tied to an incident. And I'll tell you, as overall, and having ran in a system and knowing many other places with them, which like shift commanders, they're able to manage the entire city, the resources that are with it, and make proper notifications so that the city manager knows, the fire chief knows. They're just tied up. They have a lot of duties.
From the first, from the time you hit the ground, to the time that you identified this problem, how long was it?
Day one.
There you go. Thank you. That's all I had to say, to ask. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, Chief Wade, thank you very much
Thank you.
For the presentation.
Yes.
And next, we'll move on to Corpus Christi firefighter retirement system.
All right, good afternoon. So as you all know, the city has two retirement plans for its employees, one for the general employees and police, which is TMRS, and one for the firefighters. Several years ago, we added to the budget financial policies a section that stated that it's the goal of the city to adequately fund the Corpus Christi firefighter retirement system so that its funding ratio is in line with that of TMRS. In fiscal year 2021, the city began a five-year plan to increase funding in the fire pension plan by 0.984% each year. And so fiscal '25, this budget we're going to be preparing, is the fifth year of that plan. So this slide is for informational purposes and shows a history of the contribution rates, the city contribution rates, and the firefighter contribution rates into their retirement system. The last line here shows the proposed final increase of the 0.984%, which would bring the city's contribution to 27.2%. And I also want to point out, and I know you all remember this, that in this fiscal year, the fire retirees who had been retired for at least three years received an increase in their monthly pension of $110 per month. And please note that they had not gotten a benefit increase in many, many years. So that was done this fiscal year. And so this slide shows the funding levels for both the, both pension plans. And as you can see, the funding level for the fire pension plan is increasing, and it's just due to the fact that we had not been, the city had not been contributing or increasing their, their contributions over time as we had been for TMRS. And so that's why the, the funding ratios are different. But this is something that the city manager noticed when he first got here to the city, and we have been working on this for the last five years.
Okay, yeah. Councilman Klein.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, thanks, Constance. You mentioned the, I guess it was the, because cost of living, wasn't it a COLA increase that we gave firefighters last fall?
Well, we didn't call it a COLA, but it was just a benefit increase, yes, sir.
Right, right, right. And that had not been done for 15 years prior to that?
I would say 10 to 15. I think 20, I think 2017 was the last time they received a small one, yes, sir.
So given the length of time before we increased that, that made that contribution, do you think there's a need to revisit that again in the near future?
Yes, sir, I would say yes.
So do you have a timeframe in mind?
Well, we have to look and see now what our budgetary needs are for fiscal '25, but it's, I mean, as soon as we can, I would recommend doing that, but I don't know if we can do it in this, in this budget.
And you envision kind of a similar increase to what we, we looked at last year, $110 per month, or something like that?
Yes, sir. What we would do is, there's a board of trustees that manages the fire pension plan, so I'm on that board, so I would make that proposal to the board. They have an actuary that would do a study to determine what would be the best use of funds for that, for the retirees.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
As Constance said, Councilman, there is a financial impact. It's a recurring one, so we have to weigh it in light with everything else that we're doing. Yeah, so it's not, I just want to point out, it's not a guarantee, but we'll look at it.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Klein, though. I think it's something, and I think you, you said it, but reiterating would be to not allow what's happened in the past and let it sit, even if we just have a conversation in a year or within the year, to say, what does the future look like in terms of having some increase for them? And just, yeah, 10, 15 years is unacceptable. Councilman Bada. Oh, did I? Sorry.
Okay.
There we go.
Yep. All right, here we are. Peter, Constance, I know, when, when I've talked about the health plan, and particularly for the firefighters, I know it's created some trepidation simply because of, I guess of the school of thought of which I was raised at and the actuaries I worked with. And believe it or not, Everett was in that industry as well. You know, when you're calculating necessary fund balance, I've always been of the opinion that we're way overfunded. It's typically, and I'm of the belief, and I know it's contrary to what, when I've talked to Michael about it, I'm of the belief that once the, on the health plan, and I'm going to, I'll get to where I'm coming in here, once the funds are put into fund balance for the, for the health and welfare of the employee, it's no longer the funds of the city. Even though it was taxpayer dollars that were put into there, that there's now for the health and welfare of the employee. Now, typically, we were indicating here that there's a, a, earlier you had indicated that there should be about a 20% fund balance, and in the firefighters, they're in excess of 100% with regard to their health plan. I'm just asking you to possibly explore utilizing some of those, and by the way, I, well, I've, we haven't worked that out yet, so I won't talk about it. If that, we were asked to explore that some of those fund balances can be used to help fund the pension plan to help us make up some of that shortfall. Now, once again, I'm one opinion, I like to think I'm qualified. I actually would argue that I'm more qualified than our current health plan vendor, but I would think that that would be an opportunity for us to ship some funds, so that way we can make up some of this liability that we have. So just something to consider.
Yeah, that's good. Let's.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe earlier when Councilman Hernandez was alluding to me, he was kind of referring to my last comment on the grant funding for the firefighters, which we all supported. We all think it's great, but some of the things that bother me about that are, we're making decisions for future councils, which, in this situation, is tough because it's a three-year process of the catch-up, et cetera. I guess what I would suggest is, with your financial wizardry, is to come up and make an annual presentation to every council leading up to that date so that they're prepared for it, because as, I know a lot of us can agree with this who've been up here for a while, those kind of decisions catch us off guard. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Constance and Peter, you know, Councilman Barrera has brought this issue up more than once, and, and he is qualified in this area, and I am not. I don't care about it. Insurance is, you know, my, I don't even really pay that much attention to my own insurance.
Oh, God, don't say that.
So I just, I think it's worthwhile for us to look at this
Yes, sir.
And, and take Councilman Barrera's suggestions and come back to this council with an explanation of what he is talking about and what our hired gun is telling us.
Yes, sir, definitely.
And figure out what the differential is.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Constance.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Neiman, who's going to talk about streets.
This one is pretty straightforward. This is our residential street program, which is performed by city contractors this year, I'm sorry, fiscal year '23. We budgeted $19 million for the RSRP program, and this year, we'll be looking for an allocation of $21.5 million.
The share being 24, the current?
Twenty-one.
Right, okay.
Thank you, sir.
I've noticed that on this chart here, Neiman and council, so you can see the additional amount from the general fund of 6.1 million. And this was, we have been able to, to supplement the streets program with this additional amount. This is something I put in the budgets beginning back to 2021. It's not part of any council policy, but we added it because we knew streets were important and council supported it. The reason we're showing it here is, as we evaluate our financial constraints, it's not guaranteed that this 6.1 will be available. Just to let you know, we know public safety and streets in order are probably the two biggest things we do in the city. But that 6.1 million to get to the 21 million, 6.1 million of the 21, has been placed in because of better fund balances, better revenues, less spending, so it's not a, for certain, just to point it out, we're going to make, we're going to work hard to make sure we can try to do it, but we're just saying it's not like an easy, it's not an easy guarantee that it's there.
Okay. Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on that 6.1 hundred million, 6 million, I was just wondering about the, the $5.38 last year, that was, I think, bringing in 12 million, is that right? About 12 million a year?
Yeah, that's the next, Councilwoman, if you indulge us, that's the next slide.
Oh.
So we'll see if there's any questions on this one, then we'll get to that next slide.
Okay, yeah, that'll be great.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, I guess, a question more for Peter than maybe than Neiman. I think you mentioned, sent a text out this morning about, we were talking about the bond last few weeks, and possibly using sales tax money for, I think you referred to tax code section 327.
Right.
I guess you're still thinking about that. That might help
Yeah.
Provide a means to augment what we're doing here, although it's outside the budget officially.
Right, absolutely. So based on our public engagement and stakeholder engagement, one thing that came to our attention on the sales tax renewal is a section in the sales tax code, section 327, that allows a municipality to use sales tax revenue for streets. It doesn't say you can't use them for residential streets, you can. So that makes it attractive for us because we need money for residential streets. So section 327 says you can use the, you can use the 1/8 cent or up, beginning at 1/8 cent, based on voter approval for streets that the city owns, and that includes residential and commercial, but we would recommend residential. So 1/8 cent's about 9 million, 8.99 million. So we're going to, we put a special briefing on the city council agenda tomorrow to further discuss this. It may be a good alternative in lieu of the convention center 1/8 cent. And so we put this whole 1/8 cent on residential streets and, and moving along more quickly our renovation of those streets.
Okay, great. Sorry, ahead of the game a little bit, thank you.
Yeah, and Peter, if you could add the repairs and such that we would need for the American Bank Center would come from?
Right, and so the reason we're confident in being able to make that is because in our hotel occupancy tax fund, which is generated from hotel sales and by and large from events that happen at the convention center, we think that we could put together a pretty good financial program that would help to renovate the convention center, not expand it, but renovate it.
Right.
It would be pretty commensurate with the 1/8 cent, about 9 million a year. We could also look at issuing some debt based on the hotel taxes.
Right.
So we can put together a pretty good program using existing balances
Right.
And then, and using exclusively the HUT tax, like most cities in Texas use. Very few cities put any sales tax on the convention center.
So we wouldn't be leaving
I don't think we'd be losing
The responsibilities out of, of taking care of the American Bank Center.
Right.
And I might add sidewalks would be included in this particular chapter 327.
That's a good point. 327 includes sidewalks as well.
Right. I think that's great. Thank you. Councilman Pusley.
Okay, yeah, I got a comment about that, but I first wanted to ask, this 21.5 million that you're showing on this slide, that's the money that's going into our current street, residential street program?
Yes, sir.
The statement-only project, and, and when, when our public works director, Ernie, has come up here, he's talked about the fact that he's running all his crews as hard as he can, as fast as he can, doing as much as he can. So I don't see where adding additional money for residential streets is going to help our, we are now at capacity for what we can do. So unless we're going to put on more crews, or we're going to go out and hire more people and buy more equipment, how we do that? And the other thing is, Peter, I want to reiterate, and I want to say this as nicely as I can, I said from the very beginning when we started talking about going back out for this Proposition A thing again
Right.
That if we started complicating the issue, I was going to be verbally against doing that. I was not verbal against the original deal that we did, not nearly enough, and although I talked to you and the mayor more than once about not doing the things that we did on the last Proposition A, I feel the same way about this one. And if we start going out and complicating this issue, by now, all of a sudden, we're going to pull a switch and tell taxpayers, we're going to do something different with sales tax than what we originally said we were going to do, I'm not going to support that. I just want to say that as nicely as I can, and I'll reiterate it tomorrow.
Yeah.
But this, this is not what we talked about.
Right.
And, and I don't see where we're going to have the capacity to do any more than what we're doing already. We're already putting almost $22 million into this street reconstruction program for residential streets. And for me, it also is like we're taking, you know, we got the, the tax removed off of people, the street user fee
Right.
And this is like we're going to go back and put the street user fee back in place, but we're just going to, you know, shuffle the cards and do it a different way. I just, totally against what you're proposing to do.
Yes, sir. So the council has set somewhat of a baseline to take out to the community, and so far, we've heard a lot of different things, and this is one of them, the 327.
People want residential streets fixed. I understand that, and we're doing that.
Right, I'm just saying, yeah.
I hear that. Nobody's blowing my phone up about sidewalks. Nobody's blowing my phone up about bike paths. Nobody's talking about any of that. But they are blowing my phone up about fix the potholes and fix our residential streets.
Right.
Right, that's what, so the 327 fixes residential streets.
Yeah, but it takes away from what we originally said we were going to do with the convention center.
Yeah.
And that is, we were going to allocate 1/8 cent of that sales tax money to go for the convention center complex. We've been telling people that now for months. We made a mistake, folks. We understand we made it, we went too far. Now we're going to correct that problem.
Yeah.
And now we're not.
Right, it's an alternative for council to consider, that's all, based on our feedback.
I can tell you where I'm going to consider.
I appreciate that, based on the input that we've received from the community so far.
Yeah.
And we still have a few weeks ago.
I don't believe that.
Well, it came from, we didn't even know about it. The community brought it to our attention.
I support residential streets, and I'm going to say that very clearly right now for the public.
Mayor, I support residential streets.
Okay.
Nobody ever said I didn't.
I know you do.
I just got through saying that the 21 and almost $22 million that we're spending, I think is good. Ernie's running his staff and his people as hard as he can. He gave us a report a few meetings ago about how many miles of residential streets he's able to complete with that and utilizing the asphalt plants that we have available to do that. And so we're now going to deviate from that. Nobody ever said I was against residential streets.
Yeah, Councilman, just one point, then I'll turn it back over to the mayor. So there is, we, the contract, this is all contract crews, the 21.5, there's additional monies for the public works, city crews. But in either case, there's opportunity to ramp up. And so the production we have today doesn't mean that's it, that's the maximum we can reach. We in the private sector can easily ramp up. They do it, they know how to do it.
I don't want anybody going out and saying that I'm against residential streets.
Nobody's saying that here.
I'm not going to put up with it. I'm not going to stand for it.
Yeah, nobody's saying that.
And I told you all I was going to be verbal about this, and I will be.
Yes, sir. Yeah, nobody's saying that, Councilman Pusley. I'm not anyway.
Yeah, all right. So, Councilman, I don't want you getting up, I don't want anybody getting upset about this. Number one, it's, we are talking.
I promised I wasn't going to be, but it just riles me up whenever you start.
Well, don't let it rile you up. Look, this is, this is another avenue. It's another avenue that we are able to utilize, and it is about residential streets. I know you know that, I know you, you're for that, but there isn't a resident in this city that wouldn't, I, my money's on this, that wouldn't say, wait a minute, you have a 9 million per year avenue, a resource, to put towards fixing residential streets? We've never had that, never. We've never had the opportunity, we've never had that resource. You see right here, we're putting things together here, the .4 cents, the 1% of general fund, which is, you know, $2.9 million, 5% from industrial district, 1.5 million, and then additional 6 million, which our city manager just said, we may not be able to fund residential streets that way.
We can if we want to.
Yes, we can. So, and we also can fund residential streets with an additional $9 million a year.
And then totally ignore the convention center.
No, we're not totally ignoring the convention center. I would never do that. Peter, reiterate, no, no, repeat what you said about the convention center. And it was, I made a comment five minutes ago about if we were to take this 1/8 sales tax, and I know we're kind of going off, and we need to move on with our presentation, but for clarification, if we were going to put this 1/8 sales tax towards, sent towards fixing residential streets, will we still be able to repair and renovate and do what we need to do at our American Bank Center?
Yeah, we think the answer is yes on that, so.
With what funding?
We haven't dealt, we're working in, we're working at getting together a more definitive answer, but Councilman Pusley and council members. So David Loeb, former council member, now Delmar Board Regent, brought to our attention, as well as many of.
I saw the text from David, and I appreciate David's suggestions. He's a really smart guy, but he's not on this council. He's not getting elected. He's not the one who had to sit up here and face the people every week that are calling us about residential streets not being repaired. He's not the one taking the phone calls and the political hits over what, he was one of the ones standing up and saying what we did on Proposition A last time was incorrect.
Yeah, right. What I was going to say about what he was, what he's saying is that the convention center is one area of town that doesn't have broad appeal to the voting public. So I'm just repeating what people are telling us.
Here's what you're going to do, Peter. You're telling the people for months that we're going to use the sales tax to fix the convention center complex, and now all of a sudden, we're going to do a switch.
Yeah, what we've been, what the council and what we've been saying is we're going to develop a baseline for, and then we're going to spend months talking to the community.
Right.
So the intention was, let's see what the community says.
We did that last time.
No, we didn't do it last time. We didn't do it the last time.
Yeah, we did. You went, you had all these, these conversations out in the community, which, you know, nobody attends. I've said that numerous times. And then, and we ended up getting our hat handed to us. Not just a little bit, but by conventional, I mean, it was the worst licking the bond election has ever taken in my recollection in this city.
Yeah, but we didn't, this time, there's.
We lost by 75%.
This time, there's way more public engagement and with this expectation that there'll be different thoughts.
How?
Yeah.
How?
How what?
How are you going to do more public engagement?
We are. We're doing three months versus three weeks, that's all.
We did more than three months.
So, well, anyway, we're going to have this real discussion and briefing tomorrow, tomorrow.
It's on the agenda for tomorrow.
It's on the agenda for tomorrow.
I'm not changing my mind between now and tomorrow.
And that's okay, Councilman Pusley. There are eight other people on this council, eight other people. And I think it's absolutely, I can tell you right now, I am for fixing residential streets with this, but we will all have a say in it, and more importantly, our community will. So with that, I'm going to move on. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay. You know, this is probably not enough information on streets and how much we spend on it. Probably better to have a full breakdown of what we spend on streets, because if, I'm looking at our budget or presented budget from last year, we had 67 million in our streets from all sorts of funding, and then the street maintenance.
You're right, Councilman.
Was somewhere in the 50 million range when you track, when you're looking at funds from 410 and 1020.
Right.
Right? So, I mean, I don't think this is great, it gives a good, accurate description of what we're totally looking at with regards to streets. Not to mention any of our capital budgets through bond structures and how much we're actually spending on streets. So this doesn't necessarily give a good view of that. Plus, I know I had a conversation with Ernie this morning about we're looking to purchase a new milling machine to try and expand our, grow our ability to do in-house work, right? Now, I would much prefer to do more in-house work because if you're contracting it, 20% is basically admin costs, when you take into consideration the procurement process, design process, and then also your 7% on engineering department, which I don't want to go there, but I think if we can expand our ability to do it in-house, we would do more streets and have a better efficiency use of that money than if we put more money towards contracting. So I, but with that, I'm not sure how much capacity we have with our internal staff, depending on the amount of equipment we have, the amount of personnel, the timeframe we're doing, the different things that they have to do within the streets department, you know, aside from filling potholes and doing other parking lots for parks.
Parking lots. Doing streets, Councilman.
Well, I understand that, but they also have to do, you know.
Other things?
Other things within that department. So streets is the number one thing, but we also have to have the right equipment. I think when, when you come and present that to us, give us the clear understanding of where our assets are being sent to instead of just kind of this one slide. I don't think this gives us enough information.
Yeah, this was just on the, you're right, Councilman, this is just on the contractual, so you're right. We probably, if you recall in our budgets, there's, we use that bubble graph because there's so many funding sources and so many programs, we're trying to narrow it, but good point, this is not the full picture.
Right, so I think, I think as, in order to make sure that we're all on the same page, before we decide to add something that we may not have the capacity to do with, at least internally, or maybe add a component of sidewalks, ADA improvements, you have trails, hike and bike trails that are associated with this, I think you need to have some real good understanding, a baseline of where we are and what our capacity is as an organization.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Good point, Councilman. Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clear up some of the statements that Councilman Pusley made about, you know, going out into the community, going out into the community, hello, I have the floor, can I have the floor, Mayor?
Okay, guys, let's, let's, oh my God. Okay. Uh, Mayor, Mayor, do you want to handle, Councilman Pusley? Each have our turn, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I just wanted to clarify that as being the first, you know, out into the community and having that, those type of discussions, the community, as you know, is very attuned, very, they want to hear, they want to express what their needs are, and I think that's the important thing. We have councilmen here that, members that feel a certain way, but I think, you know, hopefully, once these community input sessions are, you know, being brought out into each community, I think there will be a different, you know, some different feedback. I mean, that's why we're doing it, just because we think, you know, this is the way we, you know, have proposed, have been talking about. I mean, that's why we had, like, you know, he said that we were beaten is because we didn't take it out into the community, and that's exactly what we're doing, and we're listening to the community. Part of that is this, again, opportunity, which we didn't have because of the expiration of our sales tax, that we have this new way of approaching our residential streets and our sidewalks, which that conversation had not even come into this, you know, dais until it was, you know, brought up because of residents continuing to call. And I know that, that, you know, we have our private conversations, you know, in between, and it is acknowledged that the council members do receive the same calls or the same type of calls, which is, you know, still addressing these issues, which, you know, hopefully at the end, we're going to listen to the community and, and just that, just listen. I think we're all on the same page as far as wanting to do the best with what we have, tax dollars, bonds, and I think this is a great opportunity, whether, you know, if it was, you know, this particular person, which was at this meeting, was David Loeb. I'm glad that he had, I'm glad that he was there at that meeting and brought that up and, because I, you know, it wasn't discussed by any of our staff members, so, you know, it was a good thing to listen and to hear, and I think it's important that we do that. So I'm, you know, I'm very excited about this, and I hope the community will be as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Roy.
Neiman, I need, and this kind of goes along with what a couple of the other council members have said. I need, if possible, because, believe it or not, I've had a lot of conversations recently with District One constituents that have, you know, they do have concerns about potholes, and they have concerns about their residential streets, and Denise, we both field a lot of phone calls on that, and they talk about the lack of sidewalks and things of that nature. But if possible, to help me understand, kind of to have a benchmark, can you go back, I don't need this just for District One, but I would like to see for residential streets only, if you have the mechanism from '22, or excuse me, '23 until year-to-date right now, how many potholes, just in general, that we filled? Because I get that question all the time. And, and then how many residential streets that we've repaired? Just, I want a total figure. I don't need to know District One or District Two. This is not for comparison, because what I also want to know is that going back prior to maybe '21 and '22, going back the prior two years, if you know how many potholes and how many residential streets, so we can have a comparison. Because I keep telling people that, I know that we have increased the number of pothole repairs and the number of streets that we fixed, and then they start asking me questions about it. And it goes along with the same thing that I think Gill has said and Councilmember Pusley is that, we've talked before about what the capability of doing these things in-house, we've talked about the capability of getting the additional equipment. So I'm hoping to see a trend where since we started doing a lot of these things in-house, that we've made some tremendous headway. We talked also about changing, we changed the program.
Right.
And so we changed the program because if I remember right, it would have taken us 60 years, right?
63.
63, okay, I was off a little bit, to get where we want to be, and we shortened that time.
Sorry, City Manager corrected me, 62.
62, okay. So we're both in the neighborhood. So if you could help me with that and get that as soon as possible, I just want the total numbers. I don't, that way I can go back and I want to show, I really think the numbers in itself should show the direction that we're going.
Yes, sir, definitely.
And that would help me out and help me try to understand and have a better understanding what we need to do in the future. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman, who's next? Councilman Pusley?
I'm up.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Councilman Barretta, yes, your light was already on.
So we've had, we've had one community outreach meeting, right?
We have had six, we've had 60 stakeholder engagement sessions and one community.
Is there any way we can put together some kind of graphic?
Yeah.
That indicates who we met with and what came out of that?
Yeah, we have that, I'm having them track it so we know.
That way, that way, it becomes more, there's a lot more confidence in.
Yeah.
So that would.
There's a lot of ideas. I mean, the council has asked that we do it, plus we knew we needed to have done it, which is extreme engagement, extreme.
I understand.
And with extreme engagement comes extreme ideas.
Yeah, I agree. And that way, that way, we can evaluate them as a collective.
Yeah. And the plan is to bring it, so Heather did a summary last week with the 60, but we have a database that has who we met with, what do they generally say?
Maybe perhaps, just like Drew gives us an update on what's going on in the water department.
Yeah, okay. You can do that once a week.
We can see that once a week.
There's at least four or five engagements a week.
Yeah, and so that way, we, we know.
Okay.
Because that way, once again, we operate as a collective, and that way, that way, we're all on board, and we have confidence of what's going on.
Yeah.
I know, and that helps us, Peter, because then we get to the point, as Councilman Pusley indicated, we're obviously elected officials.
Right.
And we all have a tendency to hang around, and, I mean, to, to, not hang around, but to be pulled in, pulled by our network and by the same people that call us over and over because they have a comfort level.
Right.
So if, for whatever reason, now, you know, Delmar Board of Trustee, what is it, trustee David Loeb?
Right.
Does have a tendency to contact me as well.
Yeah, I contact.
Which I welcome. What is it, coincidentally, I never contact him with regard to Delmar, I usually stay in my lane.
No.
I never contact Commissioner Chesney about what's going on over there, I just stay in my lane, other than to offer to help.
Yeah.
So what is it, so I guess that's the thing, if you could provide that detailed information for us so that way we can make good decisions, because I would, I would think that the, the idea that there's a lack of interest, I can tell you that, obviously, if somebody, and just once again, going back to my network.
Yeah.
As far as I understand, for the Buck Parade, there was about 100,000, 100,000 participants in the Buck Parade.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the city did a great job. Buck Raiders, could be argued, did a great job. RTA did a great job. What is it, the Buck Commission did a great job. If you, I believe on Saturday night, the rodeo and the concert was sold out. If you, I believe, on Saturday night, the rodeo and the concert was sold out. I think Friday was sold out. I was there with my grandchildren on Saturday, on Fri, on Saturday, and it was packed at the, at the, at the carnival. You know, once again, I see all these Showtime Boxing, and mind you, this was also CBS Sports was there for the rodeo. And in fact, I mean, I'm, I'm babbling, but there was an individual had the opportunity to win a million dollars from the rodeo, the, the, that organization. So, there was a ton of exposure. So, I didn't see the Delmar trustee, David Loeb, there. So, what is it, in all the nights that I was there? So, I, once again, I think it could be relative to that individual. I, I'm not saying this is a bad idea. I think it's just kind of changing the, the scope a little bit, and if we have the data to prove that we're, that that's what the community wants, then I'd be willing to consider it. I'm open-minded. I just haven't heard anything on it. So, I'm just asking you that you provide the data.
Yeah.
Other than, and I think it puts you in a better position, Peter, because then, the information you give to us, if we haven't seen it, it's anecdotal.
Yeah, good point. We, so I have had them track it, so I would know, but good point, we need to share it with the council. So, we can do that once a week, it's not a problem. And the 327 just came up a week ago, Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't know about, in fact, we have only been focused on the Type A and Type B. That's a section of the tax code. This 327 is in a totally different section, as is the county's district that they want to create, that's in a totally different section. So, we've been focused just on A, B, but there's other sections of the code. I've asked our Bon Council to get us every section in the code that is applicable to the sales tax, because we've just been focused on two. But as we meet with the community, that bringing more and more to our attention, we know the county's bringing certain things to people's attention as well.
Well.
So, we need to be mindful, which is what all is out there, so that's what we're working on.
I agree, I agree. And I, but how, just keep in mind also, I was there with you when you told the county judge, hey, it's kind of late in the game for us to be making any changes. So, that, 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 that's somewhat of a contradiction, and I'm not, I'm just telling you so that way, you can give us better information, so that way, we can make good decisions. And so, it doesn't appear anecdotal that one person makes a statement. I agree, we need to look at every opportunity, just like what we're doing with, with water. We're looking at every opportunity.
Yeah.
And that way, that way, we can make good decisions, you know, and so that way, we can make those good decisions. I'm just telling you that, if, if, right now, in this position, I, I, I feel very uncomfortable. If, if we're getting to the point where we have one council member that's been a policymaker for how many years, Mike? I mean, altogether?
Two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Almost 40.
Almost 40 years. Obviously, has a pulse of the community, and, you know, I, I would just think that we just get that, because then you have a senior policymaker that understands that, so that way, that way, there's confidence in where we're moving. And that way, we're not going back and forth with the community. So, what is it, anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Barr, for this comment. I think they're dead on, and staying in your lane, I think, is a very important comment. You know, about 15 years ago, Dr. Eskamia called me, he'd, he'd just been the president of Delmar a short time, and, and they were looking at leasing some office buildings out in the Cal Island area to start up a program where Delmar College was going to bring educational courses for high school students to that area, and also for people who lived out in the Cal Island and Tullosa Midway area to continue their education at Delmar College. And that met with quite a bit of controversy at first, and I went to bat for Dr. Eskamia out in our area, and we got that program done, and it's very successful. Now, we were just informed the other day that the people who own those buildings are going to, to tear them down, and that program is going to disappear. I didn't call David Loeb or any other member of the regions of Delmar College to say, what are you going to do to fix that problem? Here's my suggestion. You know, I, I just think that we, we all have our cross to bear, and this is ours. But I, I think this is something we got to look at very carefully, and I'm going to say again, as calmly as I can, we cannot go shifting gears on this sales tax thing again, or we're going to lose again. And this time, when we lose, it's a serious issue. It's not, it's not games anymore, it's a serious issue.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And so, I just want to, you know, it's like I told you and the mayor before, I've been doing this since 1982, and I can smell defeat. And so, when I start smelling defeat, I'll let you know. But, and, and Councilwoman Campus, I'm going to say again, for the 87th time, please quit correcting me, please quit saying things that you have no authority to say. You don't, I don't, I don't say anything about what you say, so, that, I didn't make, I didn't make the comment a while ago that you suggested that we change our police officers to security guards. I could have used your name, but I didn't.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Okay. So, we are, we're going to move on, and we're going to have, oh, good, you know what? It's because I already pressed your light. Sorry, Councilman.
Well, I won't belabor it, because we have been going on for a long time now. But I did want to add, in the event that we did come back and consider this, I think a common theme that many of my fellow council members have said is we need a lot more data, obviously.
Yes, sir.
And it sounds like you're going to get that to us. But I will make the comment that, you know, I think we were all unanimous when we moved to the RPP program, which is great, and we've made great strides. Ernie and staff have gotten that ramped up, and I've heard a lot of good comments, but I also have heard some comments that, you know, are concerning just about the longevity. And to the point, when we talked about that program, is, I think I made a comment that was similar to, this is great, we're going to give people some, some quick satisfaction, but it's putting lipstick on a pig in some cases because of the issues we have with curbs and sidewalks and infrastructure underneath the street. So, although we'll give people a nice, smooth street on stop, on, on top, it may not be the long-term solution. I've already had some people send me pictures of completed RPP projects where the curb is sticking up, you know, five, six, seven inches above what the pavement, the new pavement is. So, it's not a perfect solution, and we knew that. So, in the event that we do identify additional funding sources for more residential streets, I'd like us to consider maybe segregating some of that off to a more permanent solution for some of the worst streets.
Right. And it could be, to your point, reconstruction, you know, the ones that are, that are needing to be reconstructed, because we had that, we had that conversation with, right, didn't we, I think, with your constituent? Where, right, there isn't a revenue stream, but either way, it's something, I think we need to remember that nothing is in stone, and, and we are moving forward with an option that we'll obviously discuss more in depth tomorrow, that we didn't know was available. And so, should we talk about it? Should we discuss it? Absolutely. You know, it's one that hasn't been brought forth, and it's, this is the, the opportunity in which to consider it. So, that said, now, we will, I think we're, we're good. Ms. Neiman, we can go on to backfilling street maintenance fee?
Yes, ma'am. And it's definitely been a lot of discussion with council, and we agree. Definitely looking forward to that conversation. But one thing that I can state, regardless of what the funding stream is going to be, we cannot afford to reduce the Public Works budget, and specifically, not figuring out a solution to replace this $14 million that was funded with the street fee. Last year, we actually utilized a general fund transfer as a stopgap to keep the operations going for the Public Works Department, and now we're at a point now where the Public Works Department's coming back hat in hand, trying to figure out a permanent, sustainable funding solution for our SPMP program. And to put that into context, this is another contractual program, but when you look at the numbers, and we did send you all the most recent report for our progress in the RPP program, we've completed 48 centerline miles of street repairs this year. To put that in context, we're slightly over half, halfway through this fiscal year, we've already surpassed the amount of centerline miles that were completed in one full fiscal year when we was doing the old reconstruction ways. Actually, we far surpassed it. And after having conversations with Ernie and Gabe and the leadership team at Public Works, we're quickly going to come upon a point where it's not a capacity issue or anything of that nature, it's going to become a monetary issue, where we are going to have to bring both our contractors and our, and our crews to a halt because of funding. So, we just want to make sure that we keep this on the council's radar, that we need to figure out a funding solution to, a sustainable funding solution to replace this $12 million shortfall, and without it, that 600,000 miles that are going to be removed from our work plan if we don't figure out that funding solution.
Councilwoman Campus.
I just, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that tonight in District Four at 6 o'clock is at the Ethel Everly Senior Center to just, yeah, early. All right, thanks.
Councilman Barretta.
You know, Peter Neiman, I obviously supported the reduction of the street maintenance fee. Well, now, I, I guess maybe perhaps we should have considered that, because it was very popular with the public, obviously, to reduce the $5, and now, we're talking about a shortfall just a year later. You know, once again, it was a difficult, it, it was a very popular decision with the public.
Right.
You know, one that I supported, but right now, you know, look at what our situation is. So, just please be cognizant when we're making these plans.
Yeah, and just, we don't have a shortfall necessarily, but what we're saying is, hopefully, there's an order of priority of how we want to set the budget based on revenues, so we have to try to fill the backfill for the 12 million, and that 6 million that we've put in as discretionary, so it's about 18 million.
Exactly.
So, but we're still getting, we haven't really even begun the, the numbers process yet, so that's, that's work's beginning. We just want to bring to your attention that this is a gap that we do have to fill.
Yeah, I, I agree.
As a priority, so before anything else, adding more, you know, whatever, it's these backfill things.
And now, we have a resource that we did away with.
Right.
We're not going to, we're, I, I, the way this council is talking right now, there's, there's no interest in reinserting that fee. So, once again, we put ourselves in a position, so, to be able to, in the event, and then once again, we're just budgeting, so we're just determining that.
Yeah.
So, I just, I had an extra caution, like we said, we're putting this side, so that way, just like we talked about security, it's better to put in the budget other than the situation that we had before.
Right.
How much did that generate, by the way?
About $12 million a year. The street's fee, yeah, it was about 12 million.
So.
So, this year, we were able to cover it, because it was nine, it was nine months this year, or 9 million. It was the first three months we covered from the expiration of the fee. So, it's somewhat doable, we took it out of fund balance, but, but, so, next year, our fund balance is, is lowering, and we have less available, so that may be more tough to do.
Yeah, so, like I said, I'm just, I'm just exercising caution that that's what we do. There may be some things that are politically easy to do, and then maybe later on, all of a sudden, we figure, ooh, perhaps, there could have been a challenge with it. All right, well, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Neiman.
I'll be followed by Constance.
Yes, move on to Animal Care Services.
Hello again. So, I'm happy to report that many positive things are happening at Animal Care Services. We would like to continue with our momentum by adding, asking for some additional animal control officers in fiscal '25. We've included eight in the decision package to allow us to add shifts so that we can become a 24/7 operation, not just on call, but actually boots on the ground. We will also be asking for a cargo van, replace a trailer, training for staff, help with transporting animals to rescue outside, to rescues outside of the area, a badge access gate, and additional funds for clinical supplies. But knowing that the budget will be a lean budget this year, we realize that we may not get everything that we're requesting, of course, but we are asking to get some additions so that we can continue with our momentum. And I believe in August, we'll be having another budget workshop where we can discuss this in further detail. So, this slide shows what was included in this year's capital budget. We had 1.2 million for the design of new kennels, with construction to be included in a future bond election. And at this time, we're waiting for the assessment of the Animal Care Services to be completed before proceeding on with the design of the new kennel.
Constance, when is that going to be done?
What's that? It should be done by the end of the fiscal year. The contractor will be on site next week, actually, and will be visiting with Peter and I to give us an update.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so, at this point, we're going to shift our focus to revenue sources. I'm now going to turn it over to Heather, who will begin our discussion with industrial district agreements.
Let me, we've got some.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I didn't see, sorry.
We've got a few questions. Councilwoman Campus.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Or, I'm sorry, Councilman, Councilman Pusley was first, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I just want to say, Peter, Councilman Roy and I have an event we have to attend at Tullosa Midway at 5:30, so I'm going to have a hard stop here in about 30 minutes. And I don't know about Councilman Roy, but I still have to go home and prepare.
The meeting was scheduled till 5:00, so we should be done by then.
And, Constance, you had sent this letter, I think, to all of us about.
Yes, sir.
Additional things, and, and I just want to mention real quickly, before we run out of time, the things I marked on here were vector control, we need to look at what we need to do to give some help to vector control. We need to be able to do additional spraying for mosquitoes in this city, and I don't know if that funding has been increased in the last 20 years, but we need to look at that. It's a serious issue, especially out in the northwest area, out in the Flower Bluff and Island areas, which are two of the largest mosquito breeding areas in this city. Also, Peter, I'd like us, at some point, to talk about whether or not we need additional help for council members. I want to have us talk about marketing and improvements to our 3-1-1 system.
Okay, Councilman, the vector control, we're, we're moving out of Animal Care and moving it into the Health Department.
Okay.
We'll be, we're going to request four additional persons in the budget. So, we're moving the oversight and the role, which is, which was filled on an overtime basis, after the Animal Care person did their whole shift, then they did vector control.
Yeah.
Very dated business model, so that's also, we're adding, we moved some positions from Animal Care to Health, and we need to add more to do just what you talked about, so that'll be in the budget as a recommendation, if we can afford it.
Okay.
We, Miles does have, and I think it's in this presentation, cost estimates for legal services that we support for the City Council.
Yes.
In case you're sued in your official capacity as a council member. That should have been in the budget, many cities, I think most Texas cities have it. So, that's something else. And then 3-1-1, we can, we can look at that as well.
Yeah, and Miles, while you're looking at that, and I know you're going to make a discussion about that, I want to hear what your opinion is on qualified immunity for council members. We're the only elected body I know of that is not protected from lawsuits. And so, nearly every employee in this city has qualified immunity for, for being sued with respect to their official, their duties and their official capacity. And you don't have to do it now, I'm just saying it, when you make your presentation. But those are just some of the things I wanted to get on the table before I have to leave.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Campus.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make it known that whenever the Animal Care Services did do a community meeting out in, in my district, in District Two, even though it was, it was, you know, sparsely attended, you know, that had to do with advertising, because honestly, that, that neighborhood is, is very, very active. So, they even have their own captains, you know, for, for the streets. They were like, what? You know, they were very, very disappointed. As a matter of fact, they're, they're being asked to come back on the 23rd? Yeah, okay. But out of that meeting, one of the questions that was asked was, you know, how long, you know, had the, the, what do you call it? The animal care.
Officers.
Officers had been in, in their positions? And it was very, I mean, I want to say, what, it was like maybe from six months to maybe the max was two years? And then the next question was, well, how much, you know, how much do y'all get paid? And it was shocking to know that they only, well, it was mentioned what the rate was, which I, $13 an hour, and I'm like, whoa, no wonder that there's not, you know, the people that are staying. And it's, I don't know if y'all are reviewing that, I know that there was, didn't y'all hire a consultant to find out? Is that the results from?
Yes, ma'am, we have a consultant we did hire as well, but the Human Resources Department is looking at this as well for Animal Care.
Okay, so.
Specifically at 100s.
The, it has been completed, the, the work? No, not yet. No, not yet.
Not yet, no, ma'am.
And when do we anticipate that?
Um, it should be pretty soon, right? Yeah, yes, soon.
Okay, but anyway, that was pretty shocking and disturbing, and everybody just gasped, you know, like, you know. So anyway, I, I know, you know, just looking at Animal Care Services, it's something that, again, one of those quality of life, you know, issues that I know in, in my district, and I'm sure, you know, throughout the city, Animal Care Services is, I know for mine, I think we have one of the highest calls for District Two. So just, you know, we want to make sure that, yes, they get the tools, but that they also get, you know, the correct pay that they deserve.
Yes, ma'am.
And to, to retain, you know, our employees, so.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are the, I guess the salaries, you said HR's doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
This assessment that?
They're going to review it as well to make sure it's aligned.
Oh, both are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. And I couldn't agree with, with you more. And I will say, first of all, thank you, Katie. I know it's a team effort, but I have to thank Katie Chapa, raise your hand, because she's been the interim, and she is, her leadership has really, really created for some great strides moving forward. I know it's, it's very difficult sometimes for people to see the public, but I want you to know that internally, we do see it. This has always been, I think everyone up here is very passionate about our Animal Care Services for multiple reasons. The first one being a public safety issue. Before anything else, it is a public safety issue. And we do have, we've got to address, in its personnel, you know, things with, the stray dogs, a dog that bites someone. We, we don't have the personnel to continue to make certain that we are able to catch that dog. Today, there's a dog still roaming that killed a few cats on a street, and, and that's, you know, that could be a child. So I, I take it very seriously, and I think the rest of the council does, but the funding, what we need is, I mean, what you're saying we need has got to all of it together, just come, it should come together for us to address public safety issues first and foremost. Let's see, Councilman Hernandez.
Will this also include an update to your policy on euthanasia?
Yes.
Because right now, under the section 6-103, paragraph J, it has no timeframe for euthanasia. So I understand that we, you know, the situation we're in, and our ordinance says animal care and control, not just animal care. We, and it is a public safety issue. If we have dangerous dogs or packs of dogs running around, and we're not going to get them because there's no space in, in, in our.
Right.
Facility, then, because I, we've had many complaints where somebody calls in, says, hey, there's a dangerous dog, and says, well, we can't go get them because we don't have any place to put them. Or somebody brings a dog, and there's no place for them to go because they're, they're full. Now, I understand we want to try and place these dogs as much as we can, but how long is too long? And it allows you to, and I believe under the, under that subchapter, it says, the Animal Care Service Manager designated may direct the immediate euthanization, euthanization of any animal determined to be seriously injured or diseased under the rules, guidelines, or procedures established by the Animal Care Services Manager. Impounded animals not redeemed or adopted as provided by this section must be humanely euthanized at a city animal shelter under the direction of a person trained and certified in human euthanasia, humane euthanasia, as outlined by the Texas Health and Safety Code. But there's no timeframe associated with that. I know it's a tough decision and a tough thing to do, but I would rather have this in place than have somebody's death, a child or somebody's elderly parents that were attacked by dogs, because that would be much worse.
Understood, sir, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to see an update to that policy.
Yes.
I, you know, I can understand, we can build more kennels, but then we'll have the same problem, we'll just have more, more dogs as we go along.
And we have been addressing that issue, just so you know.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Well, this is twice in a row that Gil and I have basically talked about the same subject. But I thought we already had a policy in place. I thought we already revised that policy.
We came with revisions, but it did not have a specific date for euthanization.
Okay.
It was, yeah.
Because if I remember, when we first came and we talked about the design of 200 additional kennels, right?
Correct.
I was kind of against that because I, I basically said the same thing that Gil said.
Right.
And, but I would tell you, and first of all, I want to tell you that you've done a fantastic job in terms of improving that department. In my district, in one day, over by, I think 19th Street or 21st Street, one, they picked up 21 dogs in one day. This is a problem. This is a very, very big problem. And where my concern is, is that we're, we're right now in the design phase, the design phase.
We haven't begun it, sir, just so.
Oh, you haven't even began the design phase? So, okay, we, we're in the pre-design phase.
Yes, sir.
But then we're going to have to wait until it goes to a bond election. We, I, I don't personally think that we have the time to wait. This is a major issue. I mean, I've already gotten, in, in my district, I've already heard stories of, of children getting attacked and things happening. And the other thing that's kind of sad, because I happen to have affinity for dogs, is that when we don't have the control part, or that, they end up getting killed on the roads anyway, and so it's dangerous to a, a driver, as well as the animal. And it's just sad, every time I see one on the highway and that. And some of these dogs, I got to tell you, I saw a collie the other day, a full-blown collie, that was beautiful dog, on the, on the highway. You know, and I'm thinking, okay, how did it get to this? The other day, I'll give you another example, I was going down Staples, and I was by King High School, right? And I watched an individual drop a chihuahua off of the street right there, and the chihuahua was so confused.
Oh, my.
That it tried to get on the bus.
Oh.
Because it didn't know what to do, so it tried to get on the bus. And so, because it, then it stood in front of the bus, trying to get on the bus. And so I'm sitting there going, this is ridiculous. And I, I see the same thing. I have constituents from downtown that's, people are dumping dogs in downtown Corpus Christi on Chaparral, where the dog is trying to run after the car. We've seen these things. So I don't know what we can do, city manager, to, to expedite this, but I, I am worried about waiting for a bond. I, I think this is, we're at a place where this is way too critical. And I, I just wish we would expedite this somehow.
Sure. So this is Kathleen Chapa, she's our interim assistant director, and to make some comments.
Yes, so we are actually actively working with the legal team right now to update all of our ordinances. And so we are adding a public safety section, which will allow us to impound any public safety animals and automatically euthanize, depending on how they are behavior-wise. And I think what you were talking about was our average length of stay policy. And so our average length of stay policy right now is 14 days. So anything over an average length of 14 days can be put on what we call our hard date list. And that's, that's, I think, what you were talking about.
And that is happening. So Councilman Hernandez will remember, a year ago, there were dogs in our care for over a year, as proclaimed by our staff at the time. So, so Katie has done a great job in, in sticking to this 14-day. And Katie, how many?
Yes, I think we're at 16 right now, but that's because we have had a couple of outbreaks of parvo, which we need to hold the dogs just in case, but we're getting back to that 14.
What's the fine right now if somebody dumps a dog?
Well, we're working on that, too, revision, because we don't have any really teeth to go after them, even though we can TLO and get their information and find out where they live. So we are working on that as well.
Yeah, we need to work on that.
Yes.
Because I, I think it's becoming more prevalent, and we, we need to do something there that can put some teeth, where, you know, maybe they'll, they'll think twice before they just let their dog out and then take off.
And we agree, totally agree. We had two tubs full of guinea pigs dumped at San Houston Elementary School, and a lady came and brought them in. This morning, or right before I left to come here, we had two tubs of full-breed boxers dumped at a middle school. And so they brought them in to us.
Yeah.
So it's a daily occurrence, people dumping animals, and all sorts of animals.
Right. Well, anyway, thank you for what you do, and we, I think somehow, we need to expedite this.
Yeah, we do, but Katie, and then Katie's done a good job in keeping the kennels somewhat open in case we do have, so what's the, what's the kennel capacity today?
Um, we're actually about 180% over capacity. That's because you count every animal, and so we have some kennels that have six puppies and their mother.
God.
But in order to stay going the way we have been the past three months, we have to guarantee at least 15 open kennels a day. And so that's what we're striving to do.
Well, and I'll say this, we can build all the kennels in the world. If we are not addressing the actual issue, which is spay and neuter, then we, we solve nothing. So, so Councilman, when you ask, how do we expedite this? We continue to fund the spay and neuter program. We add personnel. We make sure that there are fines imposed that, that are going to actually make a difference. And there, it's a multifaceted solution, if you will, multifaceted.
Yes.
And, and really, if we don't do all of those things, the dent we are making is not even one to speak of. And, and it's going to take years, and a change of culture, because that's the other thing. It's a change of culture, and Councilwoman Campos has a, like you mentioned, a demographic there that, that there are significant amount of stray dogs.
Mm-hmm.
So then we need the partnerships. We've got to have the PAC partnerships and the PAWS partnerships and the Gulf Coast to go educate, they're the boots on the ground. We can't do this without them. So it's a huge endeavor. It's, it's one that's happening, but to your point, one that needs to be strengthened. And, and if you hear nothing else, Katie, Constance, you know this, we talk on the regular about this, we must strengthen it. And this is the body you've got to say, here's what we need to do that. It's a whole lot. I mean, your next page is talking about, you know, a $12 million facility. I've had calls saying, we need a new facility, the facility is just completely outdated. I mean, you know the situation there. So, you know, we, this is, this is a whole nother legacy issue. I know some people don't like that term, but it is what it is. And, and so we need to, and I think you have clearly the support to make those strides. You know, y'all just need to let us know what they are so that we can consider all of them.
Yes, and we actually whittled it down to this, to make our next big steps, because a lot of it is education.
Yes.
And outreach with the public.
Right.
And so other communities have a van, other communities have an adoption trailer, which have, you know, a table and sink in it, because we can go to where they are and have those, you know, available things for them to get, microchips, spay and neuter maybe, information, dog houses, leashes, all of that good stuff, so.
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Suckley.
Obviously, we've got a lot of concerned council members up here about the program. I thought last year, we had displayed a level of urgency to move things quicker, and unfortunately, I kind of hope we were going to have that assessment quicker than we have.
I know.
And I know Constance and I have traded a lot of emails over the last year about issues in District Four, but just in general about the program, where the assessment is. So, you know, a lot of great comments, Councilman Roy and the mayor's comments, you know, although we haven't decided, started designing yet on the new facility, I kind of hate to start spending any money or making any meaningful decisions at this point until we get the assessment done.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, we don't want to design something that's not going to be effective to fulfill what the assessment tells us. I wouldn't support a bunch of new CapEx, you know, for the program until we get the assessment back.
Yeah.
You know, there's things in here that are replacement and those sorts of things, which certainly seem justifiable. But again, we need to get the assessment done, completed, so we have that data to help us make decisions. Yeah, it's, it's just, it is a problem, and I support what Councilman Roy said, that if we need to do something more urgently to find a solution to get something done, but again, we need the assessment to help us make those decisions.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. You folks are doing great work at, at, at Animal Care Services. This is difficult work, and I appreciate the, the work you're doing. Just to reiterate, or kind of piggyback on what Councilman Roy mentioned a minute ago as well, we have an emergent need right now, those are kind of our short-term needs. And then as the mayor mentioned before as well, and I think Councilman Pusley may be alluded to this also, that there's a long-term goal here as well, and that's, again, increasing spays and neuters. Anything that we can do, and I'm just going to speak for myself here, anything that I can do to help, let me know if we can get, help get the word out about this, about spay and neutering animals. Happy to do that, that sort of thing, to get information out about this. That's really going to help to solve the problem long-term, it's not going to help our immediate situation. We need to take both a long-term approach and a short-term approach, and I'm offering myself, and I can talk to other folks as well, prominent individuals in the community that I happen to know, to see if they'd be willing to help out with that, in that capacity as well. Thank you.
Councilman Hurt. Oh, yes.
Can I just mention one thing? If you need, like, a public service announcement or something like that, I'd be more than glad to have my dogs with me and do a public service announcement about spay and neutering.
That is one thing we're going to start amping up, is our marketing, our, all of that good stuff.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Just out of curiosity, I know we implemented the spay and neutering requirement last year, and if you're keeping to the 14 days, and I'm assuming it's, you have a certain start date, that's when that happens, so your average stays probably a little bit longer than the 14 days.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not, if it's less than 30 days, I'm okay with that, right? The, but do you spay and neuter an animal, and then nobody adopts it, and then you euthanize it, are you having kind of a cost embedded into that?
Yes. So right now, what we're trying to do is, we are building our rescue partners, and I think we've added six more rescue partners within the last, like, three months.
So when you say rescue partners, are you saying like life release coordinators?
No, I'm talking about the actual agencies that come and pick up the animals from us and take them out of state.
Like the Humane Society, like, or, or some other organizations that take them out?
Nonprofits. So we had a pickup today of 12 animals that are going to Montana.
Oh, nice.
So that's one that we've added within the past three months. And so what we're doing is, we are trying to spay and neuter everything we possibly can on our site, because if someone comes in and sees an animal and wants to adopt it, I want it to go home right then. So I don't want it to not have, I want, I don't want it to have something missing, a rabies, preventatives, anything spay or neutered, I don't want anything to keep that person from adopting or rescuing that animal that day. So yes, I, I think that we should keep up to date and have everything fixed, everything fully what we call green-sleeved and ready to walk out the door at all times. And so that's what we're trying to get to.
Right.
Hmm. Okay, I can see where that can, you could have some costs that you never recover associated with that. Okay, that's, I'd like to see some statistics on that.
Okay.
When you come back to us, one for your budget presentations associated with that. And Peter, I know we're going to go into the revenue side, but do you have any cost-saving measures that you're considering with other departments or specific, you know, you know, you said some, you presented us some things that have to be done, right, in terms of cost?
Right.
Now, is there any, on the other side of that, do you have any items where you would like to cut?
Yeah, we're gonna, so we don't, we don't have those here today, Councilman, but we're looking at those. And when we meet with the departments over the next couple of months, we'll be looking at those.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, as everybody has said, I, I think you are doing a great job under very difficult circumstances, and I appreciate all of the things that y'all have done to try to get your hands around this almost insurmountable problem. And it's a problem that exists, I think, in every city. But I'm going to say this again, Peter's going, until Peter gets sick of me saying it. I think we had a very great program that we announced here several months ago about spay and neutering and getting your dogs chipped and all that. But we just, we just kind of let it slide, and we didn't, we didn't market that issue, I think, strongly enough. So we need marketing, marketing, marketing. We need to get that word out so that people in this city everywhere, because I was with a group of people not long after y'all started that program out in the Northwest, and they were all talking about, well, we're going to have to take our dog in and pay to get it chipped. And I said, well, you can take it over to, you know, Animal Control, they'll do it for you right there, and spay and neuter it while you're there. And, wow, we didn't know about that. So we have to do a better job of advertising the great things that you're doing. So, thank you very much.
Yeah. And to that point, we, I've talked about this with everybody, we have got to have a voice for Animal Care Services on social media, in front of the camera, just like Councilman Pusley's saying, and everything in between. We don't have that. I think you turned one of the positions into a, what is it called?
A community relations specialist.
Community relations. So respectfully, where are they? Right? I think it's critical, because a lot of the things you see is misinformation, and we are sitting ducks. We're just sitting out there and just arrow after arrow after arrow. And I get it, it's not a perfect, it's not. And I'm the first one to tell you, it's, no, we're trying to, we're trying to, and we are. It's just taken, I mean, everything takes time. We are trying. But we don't have someone who is out in front proactively, and we have to have that. Like, I need to know, and I think the council needs to know, because they deserve, it shouldn't be them. We should have someone who is going to be in front of the camera and on social media saying, oh, no, 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 let me inform you, here it is. And educating people and constantly, just like Councilman Pusley just said, it needs to be a constant campaign that is saying, here's what we've done, here's what we've changed, here's what we haven't, we haven't addressed yet, but guess what, we're gonna. And here's how we're going to do it. That's a must. Like, I can't reiterate that. That should be, if you don't have the funding for that, which you got the PR, I don't know if that all falls under there, but it's a campaign. So if that's something separate, then that needs to come to us. Because it's, Councilman Suckley gets a lot of it, Councilwoman gets a lot of it, Pusley, every, I think we all do. Roland, you get a lot, everybody, every single person up here. And it's just, it's critical. We desperately need help in turning that, you know, I know we're doing it internally, but we need the external part.
Right. So Mayor and Councilman Pusley, who brought, I didn't address that earlier, but I've asked our team, Sony in particular, who's over Communications, to, we're going to get three, there's probably three or four communications firms in Corpus Christi, and we're going to be interviewing them all, and we're going to be bringing a contract to council probably within the next three weeks. It's a professional service, so we don't have to do a bid process by state law. Nonetheless, we are going to interview them and do a quasi-bid process. So we'll be bringing back several hundred thousand dollars' worth of consultant services for the rest of this year. We heard it, we see it, and so we're ready to make that change. We're going to bring those contracts to council, and then we'll engage those consultant firms, those marketing and PR firms as necessary. They probably, through the interview process, will see what niche they have. Is it, is it animal care, is it policing, what have you? And we'll use them appropriately going forward, because you're right, we have our communications stuff, but it's not working. And so we need more help. It's going to take some dollars. We have some pretty decent firms in town, and we'll be bringing that forward to council in the next, probably, will probably be in the May timeframe or the June timeframe.
Yeah.
Please ask Sony to talk to the, sorry.
Yes. Go ahead.
Please ask Sony to reach out to the folks at Aquarium.
Yeah, we've done that already. Yes, sir. Yeah, he told us.
They do a great job.
That's what I'm saying. So they're on the list.
Revenue is indicative of the good job.
Yeah, we agree.
And this isn't the only, I mean, an organization of this size should have.
Yeah, we'll bring it.
We should have that, not just for animal care, for multiple, we've had.
We need it every day, pretty much. It's actually twofold, yeah, we're doing it.
It needs to happen, though.
It is going to. That's why we're bringing them to council. So we're interviewing them, and then Drew, on the water, just for the water side, we're probably talking several million dollars' worth of firm or firms' contract to better explain what seawater desalination is, what water is, what our drought situation is. So he's, he already put the RFP out last Friday. And then this other one that we're going to use, we're going to just do the professional services agreement, and we'll interview, and then we'll bring those consultants quickly. We don't have time for RFP for this one.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Suckley.
Just real quick again, with respect to the education component, yes, I think it's critical. I mean, we, our problem in Corpus is, in a lot of ways, is generational. So you've got some people that have treated animals a certain way, carries over the way the family takes care of animals or doesn't take care of animals. So disappointing, but I think that community liaison could really, they ought to be at a different elementary school every morning.
And we actually have started that.
Every morning, teaching responsible pet ownership.
Right.
And like Councilman Roy, I think I've mentioned in the past, I'm willing to do PSAs too, if that's something that you guys choose to move forward with. So, thank you.
Yes. Councilman Roy.
Well, my comment was going to be on the PR part, so that's okay. I'll defer that to a later time.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all the questions, comments, but we're on, we're on your last page, you already go through that.
Yeah, that was it. So, yes, so if there's no other questions, then I'm going to turn it over to Heather, who will begin our revenue discussion on IDAs, industrial district agreements.
Thank you.
So industrial district agreements, we are continuing negotiations, and we do have a meeting scheduled for May 22nd with our industrial partners. I believe we will be briefing council in executive session tomorrow to provide more information on that. But we are continuing to move forward with that.
Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Okay. I will turn it back over to Constance.
Okay. Property taxes.
Okay, so just real briefly, we already mentioned most of this, but on April 30th, we received our preliminary assessed values from the Noasis County Appraisal District. The values were $31.4 million, or 680 million higher than last year, which is 2.22%, as Peter had mentioned earlier. Of this amount, $398.6 million is new property on the roll, meaning that the appreciation of existing properties is only about 1%. It's really 0.9%. Typically, the final assessed values are received on July 25th and are higher than the preliminary assessed values, but we cannot be certain of that. And it should be noted that in the last legislation, there was a bill that was passed that was called the Circuit Breaker Law, and it was for non-homesteaded properties valued at $5 million or less, and it caps any increase on assessed values at 20%, where previously there was no cap. And for the City of Corpus Christi, this equates to about $402 million of assessed values. So that is contributing partly to our decrease, and that's going to continue. This is, it's a three-year trial program, and so after that time, the legislature will assess it and determine whether it will be permanent or not. And so this slide shows our, the tax rate for the last three years. As you can see, the property tax rate has been lowered about two cents over the last couple of years. And so this year, we're going to be looking at what we will be recommending for our proposed tax rate.
Okay.
And the bottom shows that in this fiscal year, the city's homestead exemption, the city council voted to increase from 10% to 20% for the City of Corpus Christi, and the over-65 or disabled exemption was increased from $50,000 to $62,500. But the bottom line and the takeaway is just that property tax revenue is anticipated to remain flat this year, so we're not going to have, we're not anticipating a big increase in general fund and property tax revenue.
And Constance, what was the amount that we're making up for the change that we made on the?
Well, we had anticipated, like, $8 million, so we're going to see if that comes to fruition or not. You mean with the over, changing from 10 to 20%? That's what we anticipated.
Correct. Eight million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So hopefully, the increase in values will kind of offset that, but we'll have to see.
Right.
July 25th, we'll get the final assessed rolls.
Okay. Councilman Roy.
Just a quick comment. If the public wanted to know the information that you gave, because I get a lot of people that are like, oh, my goodness, you know, they think that the property tax evaluations are just, have been off the chart. Is there somewhere that we've made that, that information public, now that you kind of know that?
Well, on your, on a person's tax assessed values, it shows, no matter what your increase is, the only amount that you will be billed for is 10% per year for your homestead.
No, I'm just talking about the overall. When you go back a slide.
Sure. Oh, this one?
Yes, and you look at that, the all-certified values at 2.2.
Right.
I think people just understanding that.
Okay.
Is, I think it's beneficial. Maybe I'm the only one that thinks that's good knowledge, but I think.
Well, maybe we could post, we'll probably post this on the city's website if, yeah.
Yeah, that's my.
We'll put out a media release, Councilman. It's a good point that, you know, because people are talking 10, 20% increases, but in the end, it's 2.2 for the.
Right, I think that's important, because.
We'll put out a media release.
Yeah, that's, that's good information to have. I think anything that we can do that shows that's measurable is beneficial. Thank you.
Okay. Good point.
Councilman Banera.
Yeah, I echo that. The other thing is, is that can you, can you calculate, or at least have a one-pager or something that tells us what the new, with the legislature, how it's affected our ability to, with regard to the revenues now that we're able to collect, or what it's going to cost us in this next budget?
With the property taxes?
Yeah.
We could put something together.
Yeah, whatever the most recent legislative change was, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we can remind us on that in the one-pager.
I know, even then, with you explaining it, it was hard for me to follow.
Okay, sorry.
And, no, it's okay. It's okay. Just so that way, I can have some information, so that way we know what we're up against. And once again, that way, we're giving that information to the public.
Sure.
Because even though their property values may increase, what is it, there's, that's another reason that we're saying that, when they come back and say, hey, you're not fixing our streets, well, the legislature has put us in a position where now we have to make a choice between either public safety or public infrastructure.
Correct.
And so that's part of the reason why we tend to raise fees on other, whether that be utilities or whatever that may be. So I think that makes it helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. So just real briefly, the next section, we're going to continue our revenue discussion by talking about various fines and fees, and I'm going to turn it over to Neiman Young to talk about stormwater and street.
Thank you, Constance. For stormwater, we'll turn it over to Gabe Henehosa, our Assistant Director for Public Works, Stormwater.
Good afternoon. Gabriel Henehosa, Assistant Director of Stormwater, or with Public Works, for Stormwater. So the slide you see here is our proposed rates for FY '25. You'll see the program has increased since the initiation of the stormwater fee back in January of 2022. So back during that time, we projected a five-year plan for our stormwater program. So slowly, we've been adding levels of service, which you'll see on the next slide, to our stormwater program, to make it very efficient for the City of Corpus to operate. So you'll see this year, it's $35.5 million is the need for revenue to fund not only maintenance and operations, but also our debt service. So there's two components to that $35.5 million. You'll see that large increase because this year, I was able to use some fund balance to overcome some expense, excuse me, some expenses and revenue. So next year, with an increased fund balance payment due this year, plus us funding the Yorktown Bridge expansion, we're going to need an extra $2 million for that. So my fund balance going into next fiscal year is going to be down to almost zero. So that's why you're seeing the large increase in the rate, because I'm not able to utilize any fund balance to keep those rates kind of at bay, you know, with the shortfall of any revenues to expenditure. So you see it there. So now, you know, what we've been talking about in the past for FY '26, '27, and '28 going forward, is that split of debt service. So debt service includes stormwater-only projects and then street support. So your big bond projects, such as like your Everheart, your Staples, so stormwater fee has been paying for that debt service since FY '22. So right now, approximately next year, we're looking at about a $6.4 million payment just for debt service for those projects and the stormwater-only projects. So if you look going forward, the one in red is the revenue needed if you take out that one section of street support, so those bond project supports. The ones in black is if you keep those bond projects within the stormwater fee. So you'll see how those revenue needs correlate to future rates. So you'll see FY '26, if you keep the bond projects in the stormwater fee, you'll see our Tier Two, which is mostly where the citizens' residents fall in, is $1,293. But if you remove the bond projects, you'll see it at $1,228. You'll see it also at $1,228 the next year, because we can still cover that $38 million need for FY '27 with the same amount of revenue that we're generating in '26. But you see, for FY '27, the black number jumps to $1,342, because we're adding that additional bond debt service for those bond projects. So you'll see it from FY '26 to '28, how those revenues kind of play out in those two scenarios. So if you have any questions on this slide, I can go to our next.
Go ahead and go to the next.
Okay, this is our service water, our stormwater service enhancements. So this is our five-year plan when we first initiated the stormwater program. So you'll see for FY '25, the stormwater inlet cleaning and maintenance is at 1.3 years. So we have over, right now, about 19,000 curb inlets and gray inlets around the city that we have to clean and maintain. So we're hitting those every 1.3 years. We had, that was our last year's budget initiative, was adding an additional crew to the two crews we already had. We were on about a three-year cycle prior to that. So now we're down to 1.3 years to be going around the city and cleaning those inlets. Our vegetation maintenance is still the same. Right now, we're approximately half in-house, half contractual on the acreages, about 1,200 acres in-house, 1,200 acres contractual. This year, we have a budget initiative to, of course, increase our street sweeping. So we're adding two more sweepers and two more drivers for those sweepers. It'll take the cycles in neighborhoods from two times a year to three times a year. It'll take collectors from six to eight, and then arterials will stay at 10 this year. Our ultimate goal, which will be in FY '27, is residential's four times a year, collector's 12 times a year, and then arterials 12 times a year. So we'll be adding sweepers and drivers in FY '26 also, to get to that ultimate goal in FY '27. Our minor ditches, that is what we added last year. It was at an as-requested basis. I believe we have over 400 miles of roadside ditches, so these are our minor ditches in our residential areas. So we're going to be on a two-year cycle, or a six-year cycle. Next year, we plan on adding an additional crew, which will take us to a three-year cycle on those minor channel, cleaning and maintenance of those minor channel ditches. Our major channel restoration crew and maintenance crew, that was our first initiative back in FY '22. So we also have about 300 miles of those major ditches, and we're hitting those every two years now. It used to be every six years. So, and another initiative that you'll be seeing, a contract coming to council, is CCTVing of our 679 miles of underground system. So we plan on hitting 35 miles of assessment of those lines every year. So FY '24, it'll be just pro-rated from when that contract gets initiated, and then FY '25 and beyond will be that 35 miles per year.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, you didn't mention this in your discussion here, but you have stormwater concrete maintenance, and I'm assuming that's your curbs and gutters, correct?
Yes, sir. That's one of the service line items, is the in-house concrete crew.
Okay, so you had a reduction in that of our about $450,000 from last year's to this year's budget.
I'll have to check. That's run under the Streets Work Coordination, so I'd have to check on that proposed budget.
Well, according to our adopted budget.
Yes.
It went from 3.6 million, I'm sorry, 3.4 million to 2.9 million from last year to this year's budget.
So from FY '23 to FY '24?
Correct.
I'd have to go and look at that, what the reason for that was.
So what is your projected for concrete? Because, and the reason I bring this up is because one of the biggest complaints I get from our street reconstruct, or our street paving program, is that no one's touching the curbs and gutters, and they're scraping the bottom of the car on the, on the curves.
Yes, sir.
So we reduce that amount in this year's budget from last year's budget. So I want to kind of understand. So I want to kind of understand what we're doing with it this year's budget.
So along with our in-house crews, we're looking, or not looking, you'll actually start, you'll see that contract also come to council. I think we just opened it, is the life cycle curb and gutter. So that's more geared towards the residential, like, long runs of curb and gutter. To go contractual, our in-house is taking, you know, spot, they're good for spot repairs here and there, driveways, stuff like that. But you're talking your thousand-foot curb runs on most of these residential streets that need fixing. That's more a contractual service that we need.
So what would be your recommendation going forward? Is this something we should focus more funding towards? More personnel? I mean, what, I mean, because it is one of the, I get complaints on this more than anything else with stormwater.
So yes, I mean, 1.5 million can only go so far, so many linear feet. So we could, you know, come up with an assessment of our curb and gutter to see, you know, with that amount of money, you know, how does that project out, you know, how many blocks, per se, we could get a year versus how many blocks we probably need to be getting every year.
So what I'm looking for is like more in terms of prioritization, right?
Correct.
So not necessarily expanding your budget to accommodate that, but to prioritize it more is something that it seemed to have been prioritized less in the last, in the last budget.
Not prioritize less. Like I said, I'd have to see what that reduction was. Maybe, I know the materials is still there, the personnel hasn't been decreased. So I'd have to go and see what that decrease was because there wasn't, there wasn't any change in materials funding or personnel in that fund or organization.
Or specialized equipment in putting in curbs?
So yes, we do have some specialized equipment for putting in curbs. But when you're dealing with curbs in existing areas and existing streets, those machines seem to hinder your operations more than help. So like I said, we're looking at the longer runs going contractual because they're a lot more efficient than our in-house crews. Our in-house crews can, you know, any 3-1-1 or anything like that, or sidewalks, curb and gutters, those type of small issues, we can get to efficiently. But when you're talking large runs, because even if you replace a curb and gutter, that may affect the driveway apron. So you're probably going to have to replace the apron of the driveway also. And then now that connects to the sidewalk. So now you might have to make a sidewalk repair. So just replacing the curb and gutter doesn't, that's not all that is to it. It could lead to you having to repair the driveway and then lead to having to repair the sidewalk. So there's a lot of things that go into just, you know, tearing out a curb and gutter and putting it back.
Okay, so like I said, it's the one thing I get most complaints about with stormwater.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, obviously, you know, with my efforts in trying to maximize your funding with regards to capitalizing the bond projects for stormwater as well as trying to repurpose that for flood mitigation throughout the city. So I want to try and do as much as we can without, you know, overcharging our citizens.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. So solid waste fee? Or where are we?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We are on solid waste. As council is fully aware, we did pursue fee increases for both the commercial and residential customers last year in the fiscal year '24 budget. For fiscal year '25, there is no request for fee increases. I'll stand by for Drew Malle.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Drew Malle, Chief Operating Officer. Next slide? Do I have to turn it? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I was just going to give a quick overview on the CCW. There's a lot of activity that you're going to be seeing over the next few weeks that has been even mentioned here earlier. We've already started having briefings with many of you in terms of just engaging on some of these key projects. So several that we'll be bringing to you in the next few weeks will be the MRP Condition Assessment. There's a lot of work that's going on with that. Obviously, what was mentioned a little earlier is the drought contingency plan. We're working on developing that and also engaging with council on input for that. Of course, there's other capital projects that have just been naturally part of our CIP program that we're continuing to move forward. One of them that we've mentioned is, of course, the onsite chlorine generation project that we think is very important to provide more reliability for our chemical supplies, not to mention the fact that the safety aspects that go with having an onsite chlorine system as opposed to bringing in 90-ton rail cars. And then lastly, of course, is the fact that we're going to be having a lot of discussions with you as it relates to the rate study and then the rate proposals that we'll be putting forward. So just kind of touching on that, as we all know, the retail rates for water and wastewater are now being evaluated on a yearly basis. But prior to this, they were every two years is when we would set these rates. So we're going to be doing this yearly. The FY '24 rates, as we all know, they were adjusted last year such that the outside volumetric water rates were equalized to the inside water rates. Prior to this change, inside-city limit volumetric rates were higher than outside-city limits rates. In terms of our wholesale raw water customers, we continue to evaluate those or do a true-up every year with those contracts. And then lastly, of course, we're also going to, we're continuing to work with our consultant, Nugent Strategies. So they're working with us right now as we speak, and we'll be continuing to engage with them and having them come to council to present the proposed rates that we'll be bringing forward for FY '25. So with that said, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, Drew, I don't see any questions. So we'll move on to fire department fees.
Thank you.
Chief, you're back for the 10th time.
I feel like I got a lot of things this time. That's okay. So with the fire department fees, we're increasing approximately 15 of our fees that we have, about 56 fees that we administer with the Fire Marshal's Office. 15 of those, we're looking at putting some increases in there. As it shows up there, it's about $50 each one of those fees that we're increasing. And again, it's been about seven years, eight years since we've increased fees for the Fire Marshal's Office. So this is where we're putting some of the adjustments in place for those as personnel costs have gone up and then, of course, the time that it takes to do it. And then on top of that, we have a new fee, which is a lift assist fee. This lift assist fee is something that's being implemented around the country. What we're seeing is an increase in calls for service where the fire department, the fire trucks are going out to assisted living facilities, which are licensed facilities. And they are requesting us to do non-emergency pickups of their clientele. So there's not a medical, nothing we need to address, except lifting them up. This takes an incredible amount of time. It keeps that unit out of service. And in fact, since they're licensed, they are supposed to have the staff in-house to be able to do non-emergency lift-up, put people back into their bed, or put them back into a chair. So this is something where we're looking to recover some costs for the service of non-emergency lift assist fees for licensed facilities.
We don't know what that fee is, or was it?
It'll be, it'll be $500. And that's about when we looked across the country, what different places we're doing. That was kind of where we laid. When we looked at also the cost for our services, for the captain on the engine, the driver, the two firefighters, their salary, we used a road mileage, calculated that in there for the apparatus traveling to and from. And it comes up with about an hour of time, and that's where that $500 fee is coming from.
And Chief Wade, so the fire truck goes out?
Yes. So we'll get an incident response to go pick someone up that may have slid off the bed. Again, they're not hurt, so there's no patient. It is simply, what we're seeing is the staff will say, they're not picking them up, and they want us to pick the person back up and put them in a chair, put them in the bed. Of course, we're going to assess them, but usually, they're not patients. If somebody was a patient, then we go into normal protocols where there's billing and everything in place. But since there's not a patient on a number of these, the cost is burdened onto the fire department. And again, this is an increase that cities are seeing around the country with licensed facilities. And many agencies are having to put this in place.
And so that fee is probably well under the true cost.
Probably well under the true cost. But it's what we can, what we can bill, I think reasonably as we look at it. So that $500.
And that's the average that you're seeing others do. Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
A while back, prior to you coming to us, we created a fee for fire service that's out in the county that we charge people. Now, there are some questions on how that would apply to the industrial districts if we provided services or went out beyond what, just the fence line, right? I think, but it wasn't necessarily specified within that ordinance. Have you made any adjustments to that ordinance to address that?
We're looking to adjust that ordinance currently. We have that under review, and we've worked with legal to make some of the changes because while the wording in the ordinance for the fire response side of the house seemed to match what we needed, there was other pieces in that ordinance that spoke about EMS billing. And it was contradictory to the other ordinance that allows us to bill. So it was two conflicting ordinance that we saw on the EMS billing side. So we're working right now to fix the ordinance that allows us to bill for fire response outside the city limits because we believe it inadvertently had EMS billing in there as well.
No, I'm not sure why it had EMS billing because we bill EMS even within the city limits.
Correct.
But, because that was just for fires. So that might also be something that we need to reflect in any future industrial district agreement to where that ordinance is either referenced or actually, or there's verbiage in there, in that agreement to assess that.
Yeah, I agree, Councilman. EMS is a more likely service we would provide in an IDA incident.
Yeah, but we charge for that anyway, right? Whether you're inside the city limit or out, you're getting charged for EMS service.
Right. Is there a different rate for outside for EMS?
There is a, for a non-resident fee, that is in the EMS billing, which if a person was a non-resident or were going outside, that could be included in there. But otherwise, our billing goes on.
Make sure that the in-charged and non-resident fee.
Okay, so maybe you need the clarification on that specifically. But as far as, you know, having that fire service reflected both in the ordinance and the IDA agreement, would probably give us some good legal cover to be able to recover some costs associated with that. Also, are you making any adjustments to that fee?
To the outs, we are not. To the outside, for the fire response, we're not right now. We're not adjusting the fee. We're trying to adjust the language in which it had the EMS billing component in there, which we were unsure why it was in there. Again, that was before our time.
Okay.
So we're trying to de-conflict that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, Chief, last year, I think, if I recall, we had talked some about the collectability of some of the billings, and you guys were working on improving that. I think you may have hired somebody.
Yes.
That was going to improve that process because you end up writing down or writing off a good number of the charges anyways. As we get deeper into this, the next meeting, can you provide us that data?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Councilman Barera.
I guess this kind of falls in line with it. I guess for the life assist fee, you know, typically, insurance pays our, if somebody has insurance or Medicare or whatever it is. So is there a CPT code for that?
I'm not sure. We'd have to look into that. But again, with this, there's no patient. This lift assist fee, it is, there's not a patient. They don't classify anything to bill. All we're doing is going out, a lot of times, it's not even the medic unit that is responding to it. It's the fire apparatus that's going there and doing the lift. So there's really no one to bill because there's no patient.
Okay, all right. I'm just kind of curious.
So with this.
I guess that's the thing I go back to. I mean, I know it's a fee to assess. I'm just wondering what the collectability of it is. And.
On this one?
On the life assist fee, yeah.
The lift assist fee is going to be billed to the facility.
Okay.
Because it's the facility that's making the call for the person in which they're supposed to have the personnel to be able to do the basic services for it. And what we're seeing, and again, what's a trend that's going on, is they're not providing the basic service of just lifting a non-injured person back into a bed or back into a chair. They're asking the fire department to come to supplement their business to do the lifting for.
That's just wild. I just think that.
It's occurring across the country.
Wow, that's, okay. I mean, I'm just kind of curious as to how, all of a sudden, that's fallen into the realm of emergency management, you know?
It's one of the many things the fire service does. I mean, again, we don't want to leave anybody laying on the floor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I agree.
And we're going to go handle it. But the facilities that are being paid by these individuals that are licensed are supposed to help and provide that service.
Okay.
It's just something we've identified. This is, again, this is something that the, where solutions come from many angles, and the firefighters in the field bring this to the attention of the incidents that they're responding to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, and Chief Wade, I'd be interested in knowing, like, what those numbers look like roughly, you know?
About 700 a year, and we're estimating about 350 of those would fall into being the fee, where we could apply the fee.
Oh, 300 of those?
About 350 is what we're estimating. So we'll have to see when it plays because, you know, you get there and then you have to look to see.
That's half. So the other, the other half is what?
They could turn into a patient. Maybe they, maybe they are a patient. Maybe they were dizzy and, you know, blood sugar off, and they end up becoming a patient.
Right. Okay.
But we're estimating about 350.
Yeah, I guess that's the thing. It's just disappointing that a for-profit organization is, you know, what is it? If they're not manned, then they're creating that burden on the taxpayer and then taking that, taking that emergency personnel off the road to be able to. I mean, I talked a couple of weeks ago about the situation of my mom. She was 91. And, you know, those were the things that crossed my mind. We didn't want to be a burden to somebody that needed something more urgent care. And anyway, so I'm just looking at it from the other hat that I typically wear. But thank you.
Well, Chief Wade, but that said, and Peter, we should actually be, you know, a little bit more concerned with where this is going because that will only increase. People live to be 100 every day now. And so we're only recovering a fraction of the cost. You know, a company is not necessarily going to care about $500.
They may not.
They're going to say, pfft, all day.
Doesn't necessarily will stop them. And that's what, again, we're looking at different places and have talked to different cities that have implemented this.
Right, but Chief Wade, what's the real, you know, you know, I know it, well, I mean, it is somewhat incumbent on you because you, you know, you're our police, our fire department. But what is, is this a legis, I mean, an issue, right, with the state to say, if they are required to provide this, and they need to because it's costing us 700 times X, right, or 350 times the true cost of everybody going out?
This is something I think we have to look in. And again, we talk with the other fire departments in the state, and they're seeing this as well. And it may be something that we look at in the future of how they're regulated and what they have to provide in reporting requirements.
And Peter, I think it's something that Ryan should be, you know, we can talk to Ryan about and say, hey, let's look into this.
Collectively.
Because we cannot just, 500 bucks to them is, okay, sure, charge me that all day, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And then, see, my hat, going back to my other hat. So, you know, providers, medical providers, they typically have contractual arrangements with insurance companies. And if they don't, then there's a bill that's, there's a balanced bill. So in other words, that, I guess that's what I would say in that situation whereas we don't have a contractual arrangement, and they're capitalizing on the public sector to be able to do that. And if we were able to determine what the true cost is, you know? Because that's the same thing. I would say, like, if half of them are being paid by insurance because we're able to determine, it's no different than air ambulance. If you don't have an arrangement with air ambulance, the cost might be the non-negotiated rate of $20,000.
For sure.
And somebody, and unfortunately, typically, that goes to the individual. But the thing, the point I'm making, if it's a private sector that's. the point I'm making, if it's a private sector that's capitalizing on it, and we're not able to serve our true emergent citizens, then we really ought to consider what the fee should be, and what it's calculated with us, if there's no legislature. I think once we pinpoint, if you charge a private sector company and say, "Okay, it's 20 grand," and then all of a sudden, legal gets involved, then they may be wanting to go to the legislature as well. I'm just using that as an extreme example. I think we need to think globally, like the mayor says.
Yes, and again, this is something that is the beginning stages of us looking at it, of cities across the nation starting to look at it and how they address it. So everybody's seeing it, and we're all trying to come up with a solution, and this is the initial start of looking at the solution.
Yeah, and let's be, I know you, you're not saying you're not, but let's be the leaders of it, because I hate to just do this to follow. I know, that's not what we're doing, saying, "Hey, 500 bucks is better than nothing," and that's what, that's what's out there. But I really would like to get, number one, give us the true dollar amount of what that cost is, right, going out there, number one. And number two, have Ryan, Peter, if he could look at this legislatively, to see, you know, where this falls, and, you know, and then number three, let's seriously reevaluate and see where this is truly fair. $500 is not.
Well, again, we have to look at it too, as if we're billing, is, how long is the average that we're on seeing?
Right.
And then billing for that salary benefits for that person, plus the mileage of the truck and stuff. So we're at the forefront, because a lot of places don't have this in place, and they're scratching their heads to figure this out. So we've kinda jumped on this and looking at it, and that was part of the EMS billing specialists that we hired has helped us do this as well.
Right.
So it's all important, and again, this is for licensed facilities. If somebody is at their house and they fall out of their chair, we're coming, and we're gonna pick them up, we're not billing them to pick up, but this is a licensed facility.
Yeah, and this falling on the taxpayers, I mean, it's just gonna get exorbitant, you know, moving forward. Councilman Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, thanks for this. Is this a new, I guess this is a new development? I mean, this is an occurrence that's started to kinda ramp up now in the last few years, hasn't been going on for 30, 40 years, I guess.
No, it is. It's really something that we're starting to see ramp up, and again, is, as we look across and talk with other places, it's like, it's the slow creep, you know? You go to a nursing or a skilled nursing facility for certain calls, and then next thing you know, maybe they've changed a protocol or whatever conference they go to. I will tell you, lifting a person up is not easy, you know, if you've ever done it, and part of it is, they're probably trying to transfer some level of liability onto the fire department and us doing the lifting form. So it's like, it's a slow creep, and then eventually, when you look, there's a number of incidents in there, and then you start having to deal with it, so.
So you've probably had these conversations with your staff already, I mean, are there other examples, maybe less apparent examples of this sort of thing happening as well, of costs that shouldn't really be borne by a private entity being kinda pushed onto EMTs or firefighters?
Not that I'm aware of right now. I can't say for sure that there's not somewhere in there where we could be looking. Again, on this one, if you look at it for the lift-assist, this is kind of apparent. There's other things that you can look at where you could potentially say they're using the fire service, or we're being used, and we've seen billing for alarm activations, where people have alarm system, fire alarm systems that they don't upkeep, and they don't have it maintained very well, and we go repeat over and over and over to the same place, and really, again, it takes us away from an emergent response when that private business should be spending the money to do upkeep of their fire alarm system. Sometimes you'll find those in there. So that's the stuff we have to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chief Wade, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it there. Animal Care Services Proposed Fee Increases.
Good afternoon. As part of the assessment of animal care services, the consultant looked at the city's fees as compared to other municipalities and other entities, and is recommending the increases shown on the table below. Staff has reviewed these, and we will be presenting them to the Animal Care Advisory Board for review and approval, and then when we come back at the budget workshop in August, we will have the final proposed increases for your consideration.
Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, looking at your fee proposal, the adoption fee going from $25 to $100, are you discouraging adoption?
No, sir, we're actually very low. We looked at other areas, other entities in our area, and they're charging at least $125.
Other entities?
Yes, like the private companies, private, like Gulf Coast, those places like that.
Like the Humane Society, those kind of places?
Yes, correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm not necessarily a big fan of that, I mean, because I think that discourages people from adopting and, you know.
Correct. And on the other hand, just to let you know, so sometimes people will adopt them, and then they don't want them anymore, so they leave them on the streets.
And I would say many times.
They end up being strays.
Right.
So if we at least have.
But you have a chip in them, right? You can always go back.
We have a chip in them, yes.
And then you have a fee.
Yes, we do.
Or if you, if you, they surrender a dog of $150.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
Okay, but, I mean, the initial fee is, I think, is discouraging for, you know, for people to take dogs. So I would say, your other fees are here are fine, just I think that one should, you know, if you're gonna increase it, increase it by $10.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. So I think along those lines, you know, I'd like to see what, what are the numbers, because we get a lot of complaints on people who bring back, not even just dump them, but bring them back. They, you see them recurring, because the fees are so low that, you know, you will, well, I don't know, I don't wanna go too far into it, but I think looking at some data would give us some, you know, good direction in maybe why it needs to be increased. And again, maybe to your point, maybe not to 100.
Maybe not, right.
Maybe, you know, just.
50 or something.
Mm-hmm. Your lights, yeah. Go ahead. Why is it this turny? You're not on, Gil. There you go.
Okay, so I was saying, is it, you know, there's a proposed, there's a surrender fee, where is it?
The 104th.
From 50 to 150?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So, I mean, there's, you could, I mean, you can, if they bring back the dog, but if you just release it, you could still charge them, because you have the chip in the dog, right? You're chipping every dog, right? So it's not like the old days where they just, you know, rip off the tag and let the dog go. So it's, it's a little bit different now. And not to mention, there's other options. You don't have to bring them back to the pound, you can take them to the Humane Society, they'll take them, right? So there's, there's a lot of other, a lot of options that, you know, I just, I think that's not the only one. Then a lot of times, they can go leave them out in the county, which happens too.
That's true, sir.
Right? So there's, you know, I understand what we're trying to accomplish, but I'm also being, you know, try to live in Realville, Realville, right, and see what they're gonna do if you have these kind of issues, and if you disincentivize people adopting, I mean, you know, as long as we're recovering our own costs associated with that, or as much close as we can to it, I don't know if we'll ever recover with the, what the requirements are, but.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And maybe you can show us all the fees.
Yes.
From the different, the different.
Because they're spaying, they have their shots.
No, I mean, those fees, but what is Gulf Coast, what is, you know, all the different, the different ones that.
I have it.
Yeah?
Just give me one second.
Yeah, the county animal care?
I have it.
Just to see where we are, because 25 to 100 is a big jump, but I'm curious to see where we are.
Yes, bear with me once, I have it.
Sure, yeah.
Let me see here.
Oh, you do have it, okay.
Oh, it's right here.
Mayor.
Yeah, so Gulf Coast was 175 for a dog, Pee-wee's is 175, Neoces County is $10, and then the Cattery is, the Cattery doesn't do dogs, and they're 75 for a cat.
Okay, and really, Constance, this is good information, but I know there is more behind this is why they charge what they charge.
Right.
And we need to know that, right, yes.
Okay.
We need to know that, because I think ours is probably antiquated, but to your point, it's different. So anyway, maybe bring back all of that information.
Will do.
Yes. Okay, great. Any other, yes, Councilman Sackley.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick is, with respect to someone dumping a dog, like we talked about earlier, I assume that's not the surrender. In that case, it would be more of a citation, where someone will be issued a citation for dumping?
Correct, or if it, if the animal does have a microchip, then we can go after the owner.
Okay. And that would be way over and above, because that's more malicious and negligent, as opposed to someone just coming back to the facility with an animal.
And they could be cited as well, like you said.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I have to ask, I've never heard of a dog that was dumped, that had a chip, and came back.
With the correct address, let me just put it that way.
With the correct dress. So that's really the issue. It doesn't happen where you, you know, you see the dog, go, "Oh, let's just scan him, and let's take him right back home," and give him a violation. It does not, I don't, I've never heard of that happening. So I think we need to, whatever the reality is, which is, most of those dogs aren't, they're not chipped. I mean, they're not chipped, they're dumped, they're, I mean, it's horrible. But anyway, that needs to be taken into consideration, obviously, because they're not, I've never heard of one, but unfortunately. Councilman Barera.
Just, just along that same lines, you know, and once again, I always say I hate to make more work for you guys, but, you know, I've had a couple of people that have told me that the $25 is nominal, and they said, "I wanted to give more," but they wouldn't allow, they didn't have a vehicle to do so.
Okay.
You know, I know, like, say, for example, when we raise money for parks, we have the PALS Foundation, so that way, when the people, because, because there's other activities that we try to raise money for. I don't know that we consider some type of foundation, so that way we can accept payments in addition to, if somebody, let's say, for example, some philanthropist, you know, wanted to be able to make a, so that way they, they can ensure that we, that way that they can ensure that they leave their mark, or whatever it is, or they wanna be able to help us fund some facilities for animal care, or fund, you know? I mean, I, like I said, I think it's something simple, where most of the people that I've run into, with the exception, when they're dealing with that side, they're, they're very conscientious about how well they were treated to adopt an animal, and how they were well taken care of, and the people that go through the chipping. It's the ones that, the complaints that we get are the stray animals, obviously, or the people that aren't responsible pet owners. So I don't know that that's something that you take before your Animal Advisory Care Committee, to say, "Hey, maybe we have this vehicle for philanthropists or people that wanna provide additional funds," because I know that one individual said, "Hey, I was willing to give them 150 bucks," you know? I mean, I wouldn't wanna start a foundation for that, but perhaps it's something that Animal Care Advisory can explore.
Well, it's like Friends of the Museum, Friends of the Library.
Friends of the Library.
It would need to be set up in that same fashion.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll look into that, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I mean, I'm looking at a workshop and the timeframe, and I'm like thinking, "Wait a minute, I thought it was gonna end at 5:00," and only because I still wanna, you know, talk about the existing, I mean, we've got a lot of other, you know, programs that we're supposed to be discussing, but I don't think.
Yeah, right. So Mayor, we are past the 5 o'clock timeframe, and some of us do have to head to Flower Bluff